officially start the meeting and then I'll give some instructions to folks that have joined via Zoom.
So I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and welcome everyone and take roll call. And I see that trustee Smith is not yet here. Trustee Decker's participating via Zoom. And I believe all the other trustees are here. So with that, before we do the pledge of allegiance, would it be appropriate at this point? Hatton, if you walk us through the procedures to follow for being able to provide public comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items.
Thank you Chair Holland. This is Hatton Littman, Communications Director from Missoula County Public Schools, speaking, and we have started the Board of Trustees meeting. Just a note to everybody who's joined via Zoom, we are recording this meeting. It's also being broadcast on MCAT. When we take public comment tonight, we will ask you, if you are watching MCAT on a separate screen, to make sure that you mute that broadcast before you unmute yourself to make public comment. That will allow us to make sure that we don't have lots of echoes and reverbs from multiple sources. You may find that you hear the audio and see the video much clearer if you're joining via MCAT's broadcast. So for those of you that are on the Zoom and interested in making public comment, you will experience about a 20 to 30 second lag between the Zoom and the MCAT broadcast. So we will pause to make sure that everyone can be recognized for public comment. When you raise your hand for public comment, we will acknowledge people in the order of the hand raised, and you'll be able to see that in the participants box. So you'll be able to plan ahead to know when you are next in line if you've raised your hand for public comment. With that, the last bit of advice I will give you is that at the bottom of your Zoom screen, there are a couple of controls that will help you control your participation in the meeting. If you go to the bottom of the screen and click Participants, it will open a window where you can see everyone in the meeting. At the bottom of that list, you will notice a button for raising your hand. You can also, at the bottom of the screen, see a box for chat. If there's public comment placed into the chat, we will ask you if you would like to be unmuted to make that comment yourself, or if you'd like Chair Holland or myself to read it into public comment. With that, the last instruction I'll say is if you're joining via the telephone, remember that raising your hand, you have to press the keys *9. And when it's time to unmute yourself, you press the keys *6. And I'll give those instructions again when it's time for public comment. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, move on to item number two, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we can all stand, and the flag is over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we go to item number three, which is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. I think the first few items aren't going to take very long, so we will get to probably the more significant agenda items fairly quickly. So is there any request to somehow modify the agenda? See none. Then we'll go ahead to 4A, which is to approve the minutes from the Board of Trustees' regular meeting from July 28, 2020. Does any trustee have any modification? Trustee Wake? Okay, and so trustee Wake has moved to approve the minutes from the regular meeting from July 28. It's our second, seconded by trustee Lorenzen. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present, and I'm looking for trustee Decker. I'm not quite sure where she... Oh, there she is. Trustee Decker, I see you now. Do you want to just raise your hand and I can see if you approve the minutes? I don't think she can hear me, so trustee Decker.
Trustee Decker has a lag since she's watching on MCAT. I'm monitoring her chat right now.
Okay.
She's on the Zoom though, too.
I could text her.
I just chatted her within Zoom. And we can also try unmuting the Zoom from up there and see if we don't get a deck.
Oh, she just raised her hand, so we're good. So it's the minister approved as to all trustees present. Then we move on to public comment on non-agenda. Thanks, trustee Decker.
I vote yes.
Thank you. We saw your hand up too, so thank you very much. So now we move on to public comment on non-agenda items. These are items that we're not going to be discussing tonight, but might be items that you'd like to bring to the attention of the district or the Board of Trustees or the superintendent. And what we ask you to do is, first of all, as Hatton has just explained, if you want to raise your hand, if you'd like to make public comment on non-agenda items, she will be letting me know who wants to make public comment, probably by the last two digits of your telephone number, or if you're on Zoom and she can read your name by your name. And we ask you to keep your comments on all public comment to three minutes so that everyone can participate. And if you have a name that is spelled in an unusual way, could you please state your first and last name and spell it if need be for our minutes? So with that, Hatton, I'll let you see if there's any public comment on non-agenda items.
And we'll pause for just a moment because those that are watching on MCAT...
I see that Casey Ballou has her hand up. Should I call on Ms. Ballou? Ms. Ballou, if you want to unmute yourself and make public comment, thank you.
...a ramp up later on, when the agenda item lets us do that. And yeah, we're very excited to be here with our smiling, maskless faces since we're in the comfort of our own home. So, thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Ballou. Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items? I see that there are some comments in the chat room that people can't hear. I'm not sure how to correct that.
There is another hand raised for public comment, and then I could address the folks who are having trouble hearing. Do you want to do it that way? Mr. Shear has his hand raised for public comment.
Are we waiting for me?
Yes.
No, Mr. Shear.
Okay, I'm sorry. There's just a weird... We're supposed to turn the audio off on MCAT, but then I can't hear when you're calling for me to give public comment. And so there's a weird disconnect there in terms of where the audio is coming from. My name's Ezra Shearer, E-Z-R-A-S-H-E-A-R-E-R. I would just like for the Board and the public to just hear one small concern that's not on the agenda, and that's the universal adoption of new textbooks and teaching materials that are driven by teachers throughout the district, K through 12. We're in this odd position as a district where we don't have a one-to-one computer or device-to-student adoption, and we also don't have a universal textbook adoption for one reason or another. And so here we find ourselves in a pandemic and we don't have computers. And many subject areas haven't had new textbook adoption since 2009 or 2008 or so. And so we don't have an accompanying materials to go with those texts to make online learning more enriching. And so I'd encourage the Board of Trustees to consider that when you're looking at budget adoption next week, to pay attention to teacher-driven requests and what matters most in terms of our ability to teach our students under all circumstances regardless of COVID. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Shear. Is there any other public comment on any non-agenda item?
I do not see any other public comment at this point.
Okay, then we also have written correspondence that is in our agenda packet, beginning on page nine. And now we have announcements from Dr. Watson.
All right. Thank you trustees for being here this evening. I don't have a lot of announcements. I know we have a really hefty agenda this evening. The announcement I would share, just a reminder, that our budget meeting will take place on Thursday. Normally, we meet every other Tuesday, but due to the timing of the state law around our budget, we're going to meet next Thursday at 6 o'clock. That's all I have.
Thanks. And then we move on to 7A, which is the use of Lowell Elementary School as a community center. It's being presented tonight as an information item and will likely be on the agenda next Thursday as an action item. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Watson and Pat to explain this topic.
Yeah, I will just introduce the topic. The Lowell Project is something that I heard about almost immediately when I got into the district last year. There's been a couple of times where this has been in front of the Board before. You obviously got a nice presentation about the park, the West Side Park at Lowell. That's a partnership between us, us and the city, and several other folks. The other piece of that partnership is creating a community school at Lowell. And we're just in the beginning process of developing that MOU, and I think Pat just wanted to share some of that initial information with the Board.
Yes, thank you. And so the Title VII of the Montana Code Annotated allows government agencies, public agencies, to enter into what's known as a cooperative agreement or an interlocal agreement. And so the idea with that statute is that public agencies can most economically and efficiently use their resources for the benefit of the community. And so this is a very interesting and exciting project that would engage our students and then the Northside/Westside neighborhood in programming and services. It's likely that this will be coming before the Board further down the road as we work through the terms. Yeah, that's good. That's all I wanted to share, so.
Any questions for Pat or Dr. Watson? Trustee Lorenzen?
I think I wrote it. There we go. I guess I want to know, and you can find out for us next time, will there be any MCPS money going to the City of Missoula? Or will City of Missoula share some of their money with us? So what's the net flow of money on this situation? If I sound skeptical, I am, but I want to make sure that we're not somehow subsidizing the City of Missoula because we already are in so many ways. Then I'm asking, is there talk of doing this in other neighborhoods as well? So that's my other question, and I know you don't have that answer, but if you could find out, so.
Yep, happy to share that when we talk next time.
Any other trustee questions? And I did misspeak. I was thinking of the next item, which we will be seeing next week. And so 7A2, which is a proposed six-month lease of a portion of Mount Jumbo School to the Missoula International School, as is indicated, it's information only tonight. And this is the item that we actually would likely see next Thursday. So I'm sorry for misspeaking and mixing up the two. So Dr. Watson and Pat, I think it's Pat's lead on this.
Wait just a moment. Trustee Decker has her hand raised for a question.
Okay, trustee Decker, did you have a question about the Lowell School agenda item?
Well, I did want to say that this... I apologize for this being very difficult. Being on the Zoom, we're not hearing what's happening remotely the second time as what's happening in the room. So my participation is going to be really challenging over the course of the evening. You were moving on to the next item while I was still hearing Pat's presentation and was not able to hear Diane's question or comment. This is just really challenging. So I'm not sure how I can effectively participate as a board member right now.
So do you want to speak up, Pat, so I don't... We have unmuted that so that trustees and participants can hear us more clearly.
Yeah, so should they be watching on the Zoom rather than watching MCAT? Would that help? Would there be a delay if they just watched it on Zoom?
That appears to be working better now. Now that we have a mic next to the Zoom or whatever's happening now is better. Anybody who's watching on MCAT won't be able to effectively... Well, at least a trustee would not be able to effectively participate that way. Thank you.
So trustee Decker, is the delay... I'm not sure if the delay's on Zoom, and we should count to 30 each time anyone...
The delay is on MCAT.
Okay.
And now that we have unmuted Zoom, what I hear trustee Decker saying is those on Zoom can hear without allowing.
Yes, now it's much better, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
When those on Zoom choose to make public comment, if you are also watching on MCAT, please make sure you mute any other sources. That's the only thing you need to know. Okay, we'll try.
Okay, we'll try to keep going, and we'll keep the mic nearest to the Zoom display in the boardroom on. And it looks like it's allowing both my mic to be on and it to be on, which sometimes isn't always the case. So with that, trustee Decker, did you have any... Did you want trustee Lorenzen to repeat her questions? She wanted Pat to get some additional information concerning funding.
I don't want to take too much time with this item. It is an item that I am very interested in, has been part of some conversations around. However, we're going to hear about it again next week, it sounds like, in more detail. So I'll press pause now, and I'll be able to participate in the rest of the content of the evening.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for letting us know about the late time.
There's also our trust. If trustee speak, if you could put the microphone closer to your mouth and speak, then those on the Zoom will hear you.
Okay. So now we're on to 7A2, which is an information item concerning a proposed six-month lease of a portion of Mount Jumbo School to the Missoula International School. And so Pat, if you want to explain what their request has been tonight, and then we'll talk about it as an action item next week.
Thank you. So the proposal here would be to lease on a short-term basis for six months only about 14,800 square feet of the Mount Jumbo School, which is currently used by the district for storage. And so this would include the eastern wing of the school building. And the proposal for the use of this square footage would amount to about $3,700 per month in rental, about $44,000 per year, except that this would be a six-month lease as proposed. The use of the space, as contemplated, would allow the International School to split their kids up between Prescott and Mount Jumbo in order to further distance them when they begin school operations. So that's the idea. They're interested in beginning the lease the week of the 24th, and so we would bring this back as an action item during the meeting next week on the 20th. The terms of the lease would be consistent with those that we've seen for our other recent leases, most specifically the Cold Springs lease to the Early Learning Center. And happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, trustee Sturbis, and then trustee...
Trustee Sturbis first, then trustee Lorenzen?
And trustee Decker also.
Okay, and trustee Decker. So Sturbis, then Lorenzen, then Decker.
I was curious, are they going to still be renting Prescott then, too?
Yes, exactly. So I don't remember the exact breakup of their students, but it was the younger grades would stay at one school and the older grades would go to Mount Jumbo. So the idea is that they're creating some room or some separation.
Trustee Lorenzen?
I guess you say we're using it for storage, so will our people have to do a lot of work to get the things moved? And is there a lot of cost associated to the district, like overtime or anything?
Not at all. Yeah, great question. The portion that they're not intending to lease is the portion that we've had been using for storage really since Lowell vacated. So we've been using the west wing and then the library. So Burley visited the site and was on board with the space that was available.
Trustee Decker?
I'm curious, as far as a question goes, when the conversation about this use of Mount Jumbo got started and whether we have considered the use of Mount Jumbo for other purposes, including for childcare, for folks who might need it, especially if we're in a hybrid model, and also for any special extra distancing that might be needed for our more crowded schools, if those are purposes that were considered at any time?
I'm just looking back at my notes. I think maybe the first inquiry regarding the use was maybe a month or so ago. I'm not totally sure when. That may have come Burley's way, but that's probably when I would have learned of it. The alternate uses, I would say that I wasn't in any conversations about different uses of Mount Jumbo when this was proposed as an option.
If I could add to that, trustee Decker's question is a great question. We are considering all the spaces we have in the district as needed for childcare or extra space as needed. There will be space still left at Mount Jumbo. Granted that what Pat was discussing is the part of the building that's being used for storage. But we will still have space at Mount Jumbo. We also know we still have some space available in other parts of the district, and so I think it's a great question and something that we are considering is how we can use those spaces in other ways.
Did that answer your question, trustee Decker? I see you nodding. Any other questions? Any public comment on this item? It is information only at this time? So Hatton, if you...
There is public comment from Ezra Shearer.
Okay. Mr. Shear, is that who you said? Yes.
Thank you. Ezra Shearer, S-H-E-A-R-E-R. I just want to ask, I guess, the district employees, parents, and students are being told that social distancing will not be possible in our classrooms in all circumstances. Yet we're considering taking classrooms and giving them to another school so that they can have social distancing, but we can't. That's my comment.
Thank you. Any other public comment that you're seeing, Hatton?
No, I don't.
Okay. With that, then we'll move on to number three. So the topic is the Declaration of a Continuing Unforeseen Emergency. As the trustees will recall, we had met at an earlier board... During an earlier board meeting, we had declared an unforeseen emergency, which allowed us to continue to get funding and other benefits, even though our students were not in the classrooms. And so the recommendation from the administration is to continue with that declaration. So it's called the Declaration of Continuing Unforeseen Emergency. And so Dr. Watson and Pat, if you just want... If you want to explain, we have seen it before, but things haven't changed as much as we had hoped for the positive at this point.
Yeah, so what I would say is that the trustees did discuss a declaration of unforeseen emergency back in the first part of May. And we did that because the governor had given the schools the option to reopen. And so one of the considerations that we knew if we were going to continue in remote learning, the trustees would have to declare an unforeseen emergency. In addition, by doing so, actually opened up some doors for us for other policies around things like academic variance and things like, you know, remote learning. And so it was important for us to bring this back to the Board. The last time that you declared the unforeseen emergency, it sunsetted at the end of June, June 30. And so obviously, we're still in the midst of the unforeseen emergency. And so we'd like you to re-declare that as trustees, and again, will allow us to access some of the variances in those emergency policies.
Any questions for Dr. Watson or Pat? Seeing none, then the recommendation is for a motion to declare the continuation of an unforeseen emergency through June 30, 2021, or when the trustees revoke the declaration because COVID-19 is no longer a threat. And the motion would include to authorize the superintendent or his designee to take necessary steps to execute this declaration and inform the public and government agencies of this declaration. So there's a motion, motion by trustee Wake, and did I word it properly? Okay, and seconded by trustee Oldperson. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. I don't see trustee Decker's hand raised. Is there any public comment on this item, this action item?
Yes, there is a public comment from Marissa.
Okay, I don't know Marissa's last name, but if you want to unmute yourself either on the phone or through Zoom and make your public comment, and again, if you can state your first and last name, spell your first or last name if it has an unusual spelling, and we try to keep public comment to three minutes. So please go ahead.
Marissa Blyntok, M-A-R-I-S-S-A, M-C-C-L-I-N-T-O-K. I think it's interesting that we are declaring a continuing emergency while we are also declaring that it's safe for our children to return to the classroom. That seems counterintuitive.
Thanks for your...
So is it an emergency or are things getting better?
Thanks for your public comment.
We have an additional raised hand from Christian Lonsbury.
Okay.
So Christian Lonsbury, L-O-U-N-S-B-U-R-Y, parent of two kids at Hawthorne. I'm just wondering why the date is through the end of the school year, in which case future decisions wouldn't have to come back to the Board. They'd be able to be made without Board input.
Thank you for your public comment. Is there any other public comment?
We have an additional comment from N.E. Ellen.
Okay, go ahead if you can unmute yourself.
Hi, Michelle Ellen, E-L-L-E-N, teacher at Big Sky High School. I just want to say I agree with everything that Marissa said. Either we're in a state of emergency or it's perfectly safe to go back to school. And I think we have seen clearly that it's not go back to school.
Thanks for your public comment.
We have an additional public comment from Christopher Brinsko.
Please go ahead with your public comment.
You can acknowledge Mr. Brinsko, yeah. Do you want to acknowledge Mr. Brinsko again? He can't hear me.
Okay, I just didn't hear his last name, so if you want to say his last name.
Brinsko.
Oh, Mr. Brinsko. Yep, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, y'all. I'm a parent at Meadowville Middle School. My name's Chris Brinsko, B-R-I-N-S-K-O. And the email last week made it sound like that we know staff and students will contract if we go back, even like in a hybrid setting. Like in good faith, I want to know, like, what is too many cases? Like, when would be? What is too much? That's my comment. Thanks, y'all. I appreciate the work. What is too much? That's my comment. Thanks y'all. I appreciate the work.
Thank you for your comment.
We have a comment from Becky.
And Becky, who's, if you could state your first and last name?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I, I can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Rebecca Brooks, R E V E C C A, B R O O K S. I would just like to say that I echo what Marissa Lintok and Melissa Ellen said. We're either in a state of emergency or we're perfectly safe to go back to school. I'd also like to say that registration for online learning begins tomorrow, according to the email I received. And it's not clear to me whether or not ID and AP classes will be offered. And that's an important information to know when you've got a senior applying to colleges who will require those classes. And to have to risk health when we say we know we're going to have COVID cases or risk not getting into schools, that puts you in a tough position. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Is there any other public comment on this item?
Not at this point.
Okay. So we've had board comment and public comment opportunities. So all those trustees in favor of the motion to declare the continuation of an unforeseen emergency through June 30th, 2021, or when the trustees revoke declaration because COVID-19 is no longer a threat and to authorize the superintendent or his designee to take necessary steps to execute this declaration and inform the public and government agencies of this declaration, please indicate whether you're voting for the motion by raising your hand at this time. And trustee Decker's hand is up and I don't see any trustees available to vote no. So the motion carries unanimously as to all trustees present. Then we move on to four, which is the MCPS return to school plans. And so trust, Dr. Watson will walk us through what the plan is. And he's seeking a motion for us to approve the plan in its general outline form, not specific details, but the plan that's contained in our attachment to the agenda. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Watson.
All right. Thank you trustees for being here this evening. Once again, I just want to acknowledge the appreciation too for the folks that are on Zoom and hopefully able to hear us okay and be able to participate okay. But just thanks for everybody for your participation. I wanted to start this evening just with a couple of notions and then I'll get to some specifics as well that are contained in your agenda. First of all, just acknowledging to the trustees, this has been a very, very difficult decision. It's been a very difficult process to get to this point. I also want to acknowledge that we've taken a look at a lot of external advice given to us, not only from OPI, but from the governor's office, the American Academy of Pediatrics. We also have weekly phone calls with the county health department. And I myself have been in discussion with our county health officer several times regarding various pieces of our plan. But what I wanted to say is that we're looking at all of that data and all of that information. And what, what we're acknowledging is that it is a difficult decision. I also acknowledged in our agenda this evening that we know that the transmission of COVID-19 will likely continue. I think it's important that we acknowledge that. We have to acknowledge that there, there may be transmission in our schools. We hope that there isn't, but we have to acknowledge that there, that there may be. There is a risk involved and I understand that. Being a parent of two students in the district, I understand the risk. I understand it from a parent's perspective and aware of that as we move forward. But what, at the end of the day, what I want to do is show you our response plan, how we intend to respond to the various guidance that we've been given. I also want to talk briefly about some survey data that we, that we have and go through some case numbers as well. I guess I would just echo that, what I said at the last meeting. I think I'll pause between each one of these and just see if there's any questions from the board before moving on to the next item. But the first thing I want to do is just walk you through some of the responses in our response plan. It starts on page 42 of your agendas. And I won't go through each one of these, but as you can see, we've actually tried to respond to various issues related to COVID-19. So, you know, the basic principles are there, the phasing model. But really, you know, if you had questions, for example, about the grouping and the scheduling, the social distancing, the face coverings, we've tried to make, make sure that this was comprehensive enough that we had a response to the various pieces and the guidance that we received. So I already mentioned this before, but we believe that in-person learning is important. We believe it's important for our students. But the return to school does, does in fact place us at risk and we want to acknowledge that. I believe that probably the most important thing we can do from here on out is to manage that risk. And we've actually done some, what I consider some pretty creative things with our scheduling in order to, to help us start to manage that risk. So I want to go through a couple of those as well. The next few pages of the document sort of just walks through the phasing model. I'm not going to review those specifically, but just in general terms, we haven't changed the, the numbers at all. So phase zero is completely remote learning. Phase one is the hybrid model, which we're recommending to start in. Phase two is a modified schedule. And so I don't want to call phase two traditional school because it's really not. There's a modified schedule still in place in phase one and phase two. And then phase three is traditional school as we used to know it. And I don't anticipate that we would get to phase three, even if the state gets to phase three, we wouldn't be ready for phase three, at least until second semester, based on our scheduling process. So I'll go through a little bit of that as well. I'm going to skip over to the item that's called grouping and scheduling. Which is at the bottom of page 45 of your agenda. So a couple of things that we've adjusted in order to bring students back safely. Now remember what I talked about earlier was creating a lower risk and less likelihood of transmission. And so under phase one, what you'll see is the hybrid model, which allows us to have fewer students in the school building on any one day. It'll also allow for more physical distancing in classrooms. However, under phase one and phase two, we're recommending a modified schedule. And I, I do want to just acknowledge that this modified schedule really does help us limit the rate of transmission in our schools. So having, having been a high school principal that lived through a pertussis outbreak many years ago, I quickly understood the, the connection between close contacts and transmission in school buildings. So just, just so you understand how this worked, we had a fairly large pertussis outbreak in a high school that I was the principal at. And when we started to do the contact tracing, what we noticed is that number one, a kid might have five or six close contacts in their first period. And even though we did everything we could to make sure we had seating charts so we could figure out who those kids were, when they moved on to their second period in that day, they had another five or six close contacts and another and another and another. So as you can imagine, those close contacts quickly added up. What we've done is we've asked, and it hasn't been easy, but we've asked our teachers and our administrators to implement a modified schedule, not only at high school, but also at middle school. And the modified schedule simply provides fewer classes during the school day for a longer period of time. So the modified schedule at middle school and high school provides only two classes during the day. So kids will only be trans, transferring from class to class once. And they would have those classes for a longer period of time, which will really help with, hopefully with the close contacts and, and the rate of transmission. At elementary school, what we've done is we've created a cohort model that keeping those kids together in a, in a cohort group throughout the school day, not going out to library, not going out to PE, but having those specialists, those PE teachers and those librarians and those specialists sort of matched up with a cohort group and working with that group for several weeks so that we don't have folks that are working with multiple groups. So again, I believe that our scheduling process, which is not something you would necessarily see, it's not one of those things that you could walk into a room and say, oh, this is a precaution or a protocol that you can see. But it's a scheduling process that I really do believe in the long run will help us reduce the amount of transmission rates, but also keep us in school for a longer period of time. A couple of other things I wanted to point out on this document, we, we have acknowledged, as was said in public comment, we've acknowledged that we cannot physically distance in some of our spaces. We can do the best job that we can, but we can't keep that six foot physical distance in, in all of our spaces. So we will be, will be, we will be requiring masks as, as it states in the plan here as a way to help with that. The other thing that I want to acknowledge is that we've done some other things to, to reduce the amount of mixing in the hallways. For example, in phase one and phase two, not using lockers in the hallways. And the way this works is actually pretty nice because if students are only in two classes per day, then they don't have to bring as many books to school each day. So that just kind of helps how our schedule kind of helps out with the, the need for lockers. So minimizing hallway gatherings. We've also talked about, I already mentioned this, but implementing school schedules that limit the mixing of students throughout the day. Face covering seemed to be a hot button topic. As you're well aware, it's been back and forth throughout the summer with where we're at with those. But we are complying with the county order and the governor's order, requiring face masks, even though the county order may not extend to children lower than 12. We are requiring face masks of all of our students. We realize there may be some limited exceptions based on healthcare needs, but we've worked out a way to make sure that that is still allowable and make sure that we get those healthcare needs met. But in general, face masks required of all students, all staff. We also will provide face masks for any student that doesn't have any. This week, we had a group of ninth graders that had just started a bridge program at Big Sky High School. And I went out there to sort of watch the physical distancing and the program itself. And what I noticed is that most kids showed up with their own masks, which was great. But Big Sky still provided masks for those that didn't have any. And we, we have the ability to do that as well as from the whole district. So that's something, just a reminder about face coverings, we will require them, but we will also provide as needed. I've gotten a question lately, like what if a student refuses to wear a face mask? There's a couple of things that I just want to point out there. There may be a legitimate health reason. We have protocols in place to deal with that health reason, to go through that process. If a student does have a legitimate health reason that they can't wear a face mask. If they just flat out refuse to wear a face mask, then we have the remote learning option, the MCPS online academy, that would be an option for a student that didn't want to wear a face mask and, and attend in-person learning. Health screenings is another topic that I wanted to touch on. During the summer months, as we've had kids in schools, we have done health screenings before they enter the, into the school. It's been very difficult, we realized, to logistically do that. We've got some guidance from the Missoula County Health Department as well as the Academy of Pediatrics. Health screenings won't be done at the start of the school day. We will monitor kids throughout the day for any symptoms, but we won't be doing health screenings for a couple of reasons. Number one, we're trying to limit the backup of kids at the front door. I think probably a larger concern we would have is if kids start to bunch up at the front store, front door as they're waiting for the health screening. That was one reason. The second reason is what we've heard, not only from the health department, but also from the Academy of Pediatrics, is that the temperature screening, especially in kids younger than age 10, is somewhat ineffective because that's not some of the symptoms they're seeing. So it begs a question, if you're going to try to do a temperature screening of all kids before they enter the school, it may not be, may not be as effective as you think it would be. So we would much rather put our energies into monitoring those students throughout the day, monitoring for certain symptoms. I talked to our teachers, our summer school teachers, we talked about some of the symptoms that we're seeing in younger kids, which is upset stomach and fatigue. And those sorts of symptoms would be more of a red flag than a temperature. And so monitoring those kids for symptoms throughout the day, having a section in the school where we can isolate kids that are symptomatic, and then doing some of the temperature screening if we need to and getting those kids sent home as quickly as possible. As far as health screenings for staff, we have and we will continue to require screening for all staff when they enter the building in the morning. And so that's not only staff, but perhaps like a University of Montana student that might be completing their student teaching, they will also be required to health screen when they enter the building in the morning. But under phase one and phase two, we're also not allowing any extra visitors in the building, but any adults in the building will have to do the health screening. I also wanted to talk about exclusion for positive cases. And this starts on page 48 of your agenda. We've been working very closely with the health department on this protocol. There are several reasons that a student or staff member might be, a student or staff member might be excluded, primarily if they've tested positive for COVID, or if they're, if they're considered a close contact of a positive case. And either one of these cases, we would exclude students and staff. We would follow the health department guidelines for that. So just in brief, if you're considered a close contact for a positive case, that's a 14-day quarantine. And we will follow that guidance and we wouldn't allow the student or staff member back in the building until they're released from the health department. If you're a positive case, then generally it's 10 days of exclusion and relief of symptoms without any medication. So again, the health department would help us through that process and they would be the ones to release those folks back to us to enter the building again. But exclusion is a process that we're going to work very closely with the health department. I also wanted to talk about universal testing, which is on page 49. We've had a lot of questions about testing all students or all staff. I think it's important to point out that universal testing is considered an unsubstantiated practice by our Montana Academy of Pediatrics. And there's a couple of reasons why. Number one, the number one reason is that if you do a universal test, you're getting a snapshot in time. So you could do a universal test of all your students on Monday and you would know for sure on Monday which ones are positive and which ones are negative. But by Wednesday, you could have a whole new section of kids that are positive. So universal testing is a snapshot in time and not useful in this situation. The other issue that, that has come up or the questions we receive is the antibody testing. Would we consider testing all students to see if they have the antibodies for COVID-19? And what we quickly found out from the county health department is the antibody testing is, is very unreliable at this point and they wouldn't recommend it. Busing is the next item. A couple of things that really help with our busing. So obviously we want to reduce the number of students on a bus. Under phase one, which is the hybrid model, we'd only have half the kids in and half the kids out. So we would be able to have fewer kids on the bus at any given day. Under phase two, however, when, when it's every day, every student, we would, what helps us with our busing is our staggered schedule. So something I didn't mention earlier, but middle school is going to start first in the morning, elementary starts second, high schools start last. And that staggered schedule really helps us with our busing because we can use some buses that we would normally have to use to transfer high school kids. We can move those open buses to the middle school kids and reduce the number of kids on the, on the routes where there's more students. We also asked a busing question on the survey and that will help us determine how many kids are actually planning on riding the bus. Already talked about hallways and lockers. Playgrounds has been a big question. We believe that the use of outdoor spaces is going to be important. It's important respite for our students to get outside. But when we send students outside, we're going to send them out in cohort groups and try to keep them together in cohort groups. If they're going to be on the, on the playground and they can't socially distance, then they're going to have to wear their masks. And then again, cleaning whatever surfaces we can clean between cohort groups. The, the food and the cafeteria and the meals is probably the next biggest question that I get in general at K5. And at Six State, we'll be doing food in the classroom. And that's again, and it's an effort to keep students together during that part of the day. Obviously, they'll have other time when they'll have breaks during the day, but we want to try to keep them together while they're eating lunch. And again, what we're going to do is deliver lunch to the classroom or have an area right outside the classroom where they can pick it up. The other thing that, that I wanted to point out, which is new for us, is in order to sort of ease the process around breakfast for K5, we've decided to move to a universal breakfast after the bell program. This program allows us to serve breakfast for free for all kids. So we don't have to check to see what their lunch status is. But that's something we're doing at K5 is that breakfast after the bell program for all students and that'll be done in their classrooms. That's something that we've experimented at with a couple of elementary schools in the- the past, but this seemed like the best year to really do that at all schools universally. At high school, the lunch program is slightly different. Due to space considerations, we're going to require that ninth and 10th graders stay on campus. The high school principals have set up locations in the school where students could eat lunch and try to keep them in smaller groups. 11th and 12th graders would be allowed to leave campus or stay on campus if they like. But again, that's in an effort to just make sure that we can keep students in smaller groups when they are on campus. We'll reassess that program throughout the semester, but we believe that's the best option. And we had many long discussions about the lunch at the high school. In general, the lunches are grab-and-go meals, just for ease of eating those in the classroom. At the same time, we're trying to balance that with giving students some choice in the lunch program. I know that sometimes the grab-and-go meals can get pretty monotonous. So we'll we'll do our best on that. But in general, in order to eat lunch in the classroom, it's going to have to be a grab-and-go sort of meal. Last thing, I'll just say, for any student that is in remote learning, whether they're in the MCPS Online Academy, or if they're in the remote learning on the hybrid days, they can they can still access lunch at at the school buildings. So we will have that figured out as well. Already mentioned the protocols around visitors and adults. Under Phase One and Phase Two, we wouldn't have any outside visitors in the school. This includes parent volunteers, so things like the coffee carts that you see at the high school won't be in place during Phase One and Phase Two, because those are those are run by parent volunteers generally. The last thing, I'll just mention a couple of other things, the cleaning protocols. Our cleaning protocols have been revised and outlined. We're providing training for our staff. We would expect that not only our custodians, but our entire staff participates in the cleaning protocols. And then HVAC, we've gotten a lot of questions about heating ventilation systems. As you all are well aware, many of our schools have new systems. And we're asking our contractors to determine the best use of those systems, to make sure they're operating properly, and make sure that we've got filters changed out on a regular basis. We're also exploring enhancements to the systems. Our facilities manager right now is is exploring some enhancements to our systems that are specifically COVID-19-related. And we'll be using some of our CARES Act money to get those enhancements installed as quickly as possible. So let me pause there and just see if you have any questions about the general response to the COVID recommendations.
Trustee Lorenzen?
I have two. One is probably obvious, but with the meals, will they, everyone still be allowed to bring their own lunch?
Yes.
Okay, and then the second is, in K-5, how are you handling art?
Oh, great question. Yep, so here's a here's what our plan is for K-5. Now, remember what I said, is we're trying to keep students in a cohort group together. And so what that means is that we're not moving out to other classrooms or mixing of students. So all of our specialists, music, art, library, I'm forgetting one, Russ, PE, all of our specialists will be matched with a cohort. So if I was an art teacher, for example, I would be matched with a cohort group of kids, and I would stay with those kids for an extended period of days. And I would be able to push in and provide some art lessons in the classroom to provide respite for that classroom teacher. So that's really the model, is rather than having that art teacher rotate through multiple grade levels over a given day, we're trying to keep that that specialist, that art teacher, with the same cohort of kids for several days before they move on to the next group.
Trustee Oldperson?
For the for the cleaning, is that something the district is going to provide for each teacher in their classrooms? And does that include hand sanitizer?
Yes, so we've invested in a lot of hand sanitizer. That's that's hasn't been an issue for us to get that. One of the issues that we're struggling with, which I think is not a surprise, because it seems like most are, are the sanitation wipes. So the wipes that you, you know, you buy at Costco, which you haven't been able to buy at Costco for years or weeks. So that's one area. But hand sanitizer has not been an issue for us. We're also investing in the dispensers to put throughout the building, the hand sanitizers, dispensers. We will be providing teachers with other ways to sanitize their rooms, spray bottles or other mechanisms to sanitize their room. We also invested in a few, although they're fairly expensive and they're also equally hard to get. We've investigated and we've invested in a few of the large-scale fogging machines. I know there's a better name for it. If Burley were here, he would correct me. But it's basically a backpack machine that a custodian would use to to sanitize an entire space fairly quickly if if we needed to. So I I believe we've got the most of the equipment in place, with the exception of some of the stuff we're struggling getting our hands on.
And I I just noticed that. So Trustee Decker, go ahead, if you have a question.
Thanks. I'm curious about how teachers are being provided the opportunity to make requests for working online versus working in the classrooms and what that's what that process is looking like. And also, a little bit curious, as I know a lot of folks are, about the Online Academy. Of course, the the decision to to go remote, to 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 choose 100% remote should, of course, be first and foremost a health and safety choice. But I'm I know people have a lot of questions about what that's going to look like. So I didn't know if this is the appropriate time to ask you that question.
Well, if if you'll allow me to just provide a few other pieces of information, and then we'll want the, actually, the Online Academy was a piece of the information I was going to provide.
Okay, great, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Can I ask the question now about teachers? Or is that related to the Online Academy?
Yeah, actually, Dave can help answer that a little bit. Dave, I don't know if you can get to a microphone, but you'll need to do that. So we've been, we have been collecting those teacher requests for about the last month.
Yeah, about two weeks ago, we sent out a memorandum to all of our employees with our telecommuting procedures and a telecommuting application. And since that time, employees have been submitting those applications to us, to their principals, and they come to the HR department. At this point, we're still waiting until we get the Remote Academy figured out, and we determine what our needs will be in terms of teaching staff. And then we'll be evaluating all of the telecommuting requests based upon a set of criteria in our procedures to determine eligibility. Our goal, obviously, would be to try to accommodate every single one of the telecommuting requests that we have. I'm not sure that we'll be able to do that, but we are, we'll be evaluating all of those in the next couple of weeks.
I have one more, but I also just, I want to make sure that that we're being fair in that order.
Oh. So I think, Trustee.
I think it's because she turned hers on.
Okay. I might have missed out on if this was discussed, but I'm curious about how they're going to work with science and the science labs and stuff.
Yeah, that that is a great question. And and I would just expand that question a little bit more than science, because what we're worried about is any, actually, any curriculum where they have to share tools. So culinary arts, industrial arts, any of those areas where they have to share tools. And so I think our teachers are well aware of that, because they they work, they work with materials management, a lot of them do on a frequent basis, just in their regular teaching. So we'll we'll be providing some protocol, and and the teachers have come forward too and said, I think there's ways that I can do a lab, a science lab, without sharing tools, or maybe more of a demonstration, or having something that's able to be done at home, done at home, or having only a few students share tools, and then cleaning between 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 students.
And I'm back on. And so Trustee Oldperson had a question, then Trustee Decker will come back to you as well.
How is the district looking at for students with IEPs and the vulnerable populations in our district?
Yep. So a couple of different things I just want to point out. When we went to remote learning last spring, we did the best we could to maintain relationships with those families that are on IEPs. But now that we're back in person, or could potentially be back in person, we know that one of the things we'll have to do right away is have a meeting with those families to determine, you know, what services were potentially lost last year, and what we need to do to make up time for those services lost. So that's one thing. That would be for for students that are in the building. I think one of the other things we talked about is how to provide services on a daily basis for those kids. Sometimes, in the past, kids might have been pulled out more often and gone to a different room. But what that causes is mixing of students, which is what we're trying to get away from. So more than likely, those services will need to be provided in their classroom rather than being pulled out. That's just a general general statement. There are some situations that are different than that, but in general, that's what we've been looking at. And then the final thing I would say is that we will have some students, and that was the next thing I was going to go over, is the survey data. We will have some students that are working remotely, 100% virtual. And so we are working out models to figure out how to provide services for those students that are working remotely. We also have some special education teachers that have requested to work remotely, so we may be able to match some of those students up with a special education teacher.
And then Trustee Decker, you had another question?
Yes, thank you so much, Chair Holland. I my question is, last time that we met, we talked a lot about the idea of triggers for moving between the phases. And at that time, we were talking about looking for a steady decline or drop in cases as the kind of trigger that we would be looking for for opening the way that we had thought at that time. And I'm just wondering if we have different information now, other information now, about what we're talking, like, if we're still looking at that same idea of decline as what we're looking for in terms of trigger. And I'm also wondering if, because the opening of school is still a couple of weeks away, is there the possibility that we may, in fact, make a different decision based on cases and triggers than we are talking about under our best case scenarios of tonight?
Yeah, that was also on my list to go through some of that data. So let me let me do the survey data first, if you don't mind. I'll just talk in general terms about the survey, and then we'll move right to those case numbers and the current data that I have.
Fantastic, thank you.
So we did send out a survey about a week and a half ago, maybe two weeks now, but lots of questions on the survey, but I just want to go over a couple of the findings. So about 72% of our parents responded to the survey. And of that 72% that did respond, about 73% preferred an in-person instruction model. About 26% preferred a remote-only or 100% virtual model. And that differs a little bit by grade level, so I just want to clarify that a little bit. In K-5, it was about 73%. Middle school, 70%. High school, 76%. So a little bit higher in high school, a little bit lower in middle school. But basically, roughly around, you know, anywhere from 70% to 75% of our families marked on that question that they would prefer in-person instruction. The other thing I wanted to point out is we asked some questions about childcare. And while that's not a topic on my list here, I do think it's important to recognize that with our community. So in the hybrid model, about 36 of our K-5 families, 36%, talked about the need for childcare on in the hybrid model on those opposite days. So something for us to be aware of. And then about 31% of our K-5 families talked about the need for childcare in the after-school hours because of our shortened schedule. So middle school is much lower. Middle school is under 10% for both of those questions. But I do want to acknowledge that the childcare question was on our survey, and it's something that we need to be concerned about as as a district, because we don't want those students necessarily mixing in childcared settings on opposite days. And so we want to figure out a way to provide childcare if we can. So childcare is definitely an issue under both the hybrid model and the after-school model. So let me move past the survey and talk about the data. And I may have Pat help me with this to run the computer. So if you can just scroll up when I tell you to. Okay, so the first thing you're looking at, and hopefully I've shared that on Zoom. Can you see that on Zoom? Okay, perfect. The first thing you're looking at is the number of confirmed cases, I'm sorry, confirmed new cases. I went back as far as I could get data from the Health Department, all the way back to late June, and then sort of worked forward. The difference I did with this particular graph is I did a rolling average of the of the 14 days surrounding that particular day that we're talking about. The reason I did the rolling average is because the confirmed new cases go up and down by day. And so a rolling average sort of helps you understand what it is in that period of time. So, for example, sometimes on the weekends, we get zero new confirmed cases, and that's just a testing issue of when the tests come back. And so if you just looked at the chart of confirmed new cases, you would see a bunch of stops and starts or ups and downs. And so using a rolling average definitely does help with that. The one thing I would point out, that in late July, early August, we've seen a surge or an increase in the number of new confirmed cases. And you'll see that on that graph. But I also want to point out that that's just something that we need to consider and look at. It didn't necessarily change my mind in terms of which model we should start in, but it's something that we need to continue to watch. And to address Trustee Decker's original question about, you know, could things change before the first day of school? We really only have about two weeks before the first day of school. And so I I want to give our parents and our staff enough time to prepare for that, and that's why I think we need to make the decision now, and continue to watch those case counts over the next, not only the next two weeks, but the next two months. So Pat, if you could scroll up. Perfect, right there. The next graph is the rate of transmission. And if you recall from the last discussion, the rate of transmission is, if if the rate of transmission is higher than one, it's basically how many how many other people are going to get sick from one confirmed case? So if you had a rate of transmission at two, every confirmed case would get two other people sick. If rate of transmission at three, three other people sick. So obviously, you want a lower rate of transmission. Our rate of transmission in Missoula County has been much better than the than the state of Montana, and you can see that in that graph. This one also goes up and down, and so this is also a 14-day rolling average for rate of transmission. This one always legs a little bit behind. So the where I got this data was from the University of Montana Public Health Department, and this is a little bit old. I think it goes to the end of July. So we're going to continue to watch that and update this graph. As these graphs get updated, I'll make sure they get updated on our webpage, so folks can follow along with with the data. But the rate of transmission for the state is anywhere from 1.4 to 1.5. But for Missoula, we're still hovering around 1.0. Obviously, we want it lower than one, if we can. Rate of transmission lower than one means there's less spread in your community. The next graph is one that we didn't talk about at the last board meeting, but I think is equally as important, is that is the number of active cases in our community. And that's held pretty steady over most of the summer, the number of active current cases. Recently, it has ticked up a little bit. So we were at 60 to 70, and now we're closer to 80 to 90 active cases in our community. Again, that's something to watch really carefully and see how that goes up and down. This as well is a is a rolling average. And then the last thing I'll talk about is the cases per 10,000. So basically, what we did with this one is we just took the active cases and divided it out by per 10,000. And the reason I'm using 10,000 is there's approximately 10,000 students in our district. There's a little lower than that, but it's close enough. So what I'm, the reason I think this one's so important is you can see at any given time, the the number of kiddos or the number of people in our community per 10,000. So let me look at the numbers. You can see that that hovers anywhere between four and six. So what that tells us is that on any given day, if there's six people in our community per 10,000 that are positive cases, and if you assume that our school district is a microcosm of our of our community, then we're probably going to have six kids or families in our district at any given time that are dealing with implications of COVID-19. So it's just something to watch and be aware of. If that number gets really, really high, that's something that we need to we need to talk about. So trustees, Trustee Decker asked the question, like, what are the metrics? Where's the lines? I I think it's important to look at all this data and continue to watch it. It doesn't change my recommendation for starting in the hybrid model. I think the hybrid model is is safe, it's conservative. There are several other school districts There are several other school districts around the state that are not starting in the hybrid model. They're starting in sort of a phase three traditional model. I don't think that's safe. I do think the hybrid model is conservative. I think it gives us time to really watch those case counts and make decisions as we go along. Committed to bringing this data back to the board as frequently as possible. And if we get to a point where I believe we need to start, go to a different model, we would have that discussion with the board before we move to a different phase. So that's the data piece. I guess I would pause there just for questions on that.
So are there any questions, trustee Mercer? And then I can't, hold it for Grace.
So you talked before that part of the desire for the hybrid was to see a month from now if opening has had an effect on the numbers. If the numbers stay more or less where they are now, do you envision us then staying in the phase one? Would you need to see it go down or would steady warrant opening up further?
Yeah, so great question. I asked our county health officer to join the meeting this evening, so I believe she's still on the Zoom, Ellen Leahy. And she can talk more specifically if you have questions about community data and what it's looked like over the long term. I do think we're starting to see these ups and downs, but it is, it is, you know, we're not seeing the same numbers that they're seeing in Yellowstone County or Gallatin County. So it could be a steady state for a while, and I think we need to watch that. We don't quite frankly have enough data yet to say that it's a steady state. But if, if the numbers are manageable, not only for us, but also for the health department, then I would make a recommendation to move to phase two in late September. And I can show you that rolling start schedule that I have proposed. But we're going to have to watch that very carefully. But you can see by the data I reported earlier about childcare, childcare is definitely an issue under phase one. And so I think phase one is a conservative place to start and watch the numbers. But if, if we remain fairly steady or even decline a little bit, then I think it is safe to move to phase two. That's a recommendation I would bring back to the board. I wouldn't make that decision on my own. And I don't know if, if the health officer, Ellen Leahy, would like to make any comments, just in general comments about case numbers or maybe an update on what you're seeing in the community? Maybe she's no longer on the Zoom.
Hi, I am on, is it unmuted?
Yep.
Thank, thank you. I first want to say that it has been so helpful working with your superintendent and others in your organization to come up with what I think is a very well structured, conservative plan for opening, particularly when you look at it in relation to some of the guidance that is out here. The, the use and the extensive use of the cohort model is a burden. I, I don't know, I, I, I don't know how you were able to commit to that, but I can tell you that that is a very valuable model. The smaller the group is, it's kind of like a fire break. If you do get a case in there, you know who you have to immediately attend to quarantine and to protect. And to move that model throughout all of your grades and then other alternatives, I just can't speak highly enough to how well thought out and conservative this model is. I do concur with your superintendent that we can move unless we see something quite drastic from hybrid to modified. I see the hybrid model as a way to practice. It's just a way to practice. So you learn the children, the students, the staff, the teachers. You really learn how school is going to be different. And that is just, some of it's almost a muscle memory. Where is six feet? Is my mask on? Don't gather up at the door, you know, excitement for research, so on and so forth. So I think it's very conservative for the purposes of practicing to start in hybrid. Otherwise, I would suggest that you could start right in modified. But I think you'll have more success on the ground with the structure that you've set forth, starting that way. One thing I would ask you to consider when you look at data, it's always two-sided in terms of what it tells us and what its limitations are. And we are assisted by the epidemiology professors at the University of Montana. They actually lead our epidemiology unit here in Missoula County. So we have expert assistance. And they are going to be making a presentation next Wednesday on the 19th, sometime between 10:00 and noon, to try to go over all of the types of data that the superintendent showed you and more, and how that relates in the community. But when you do look at the data, because our numbers are low, comparatively low, when you see changes in the data that go like this, it's because our data points are still small. So the good thing is our data points, meaning our number of cases, are still small. The limitation in depicting that is any line that you see is going to look a little more radical as it goes up and down. So the use of the 14-day rolling average, so on and so forth. And we will have some things on that press conference on the 19th where you can also compare to the state. And we will record that. And I think that will help you further join your superintendent in this excellent work that he has done in, in learning all of this and what it means. There is no one trigger. We will look at all the data when we make a decision. And when we look at what might need to happen in one school, we will look at that school, not in a vacuum, but we will look at that school, the size, the age, the types of exposure. And I think we're going to be able to do that with some efficiency thanks to the plan that your team has put together.
All right, thanks, Ellen. And just a couple of other things, and then I'll wrap up. Trustee Mercer asked about that, sort of that phase one. And I think it is beneficial to talk about the, what I, what I'm calling the rolling start, which in my mind is fairly conservative. Now, it's not as conservative as starting off in phase zero. Obviously, that would be the most conservative place. But a rolling start is really sort of a middle ground and really gets us into school and helps us watch the case numbers. So I'm going to show you an example of what I mean by the rolling start. So what's really unique about the start of the year is it's always a little bit herky-jerky in terms of Labor Day and other activities that we have at the start of the year. But this allowed us really for some flexibility. So really, the first week of school is a three-day week. And the very first day of school, we're recommending only kindergarten, sixth grade, and ninth grade. And we really think that'll help with that transition because a lot of those kids have not been in school for a long time, as you're well aware. So we believe that focusing on kindergarten, sixth grade, and ninth grade, that first day will really help with the transition. On the second and third day, we bring in half the K-12 population on the second day, the other half on the third day. So again, that just provides us some little more flexibility that first week. Starting the second week, we actually have Monday as a teacher training day. And then we'd, we'd launch right into the cohort, I'm sorry, the hybrid model, which we would have half the kids there on Tuesday and Wednesday, the other half the kids on Thursday, Friday. What I want you to note, though, in this rolling start is the number of days that we have between these to really make decisions and watch the case count. So if you look at those dates, we really have a number of days during those weeks to really watch the case count and see how things are going. In fact, we have a full 41 days before we would ever even talk about entering phase two. And so that's a lot of days when we can work with the health department, watch the case count, work on our protocols, see if the restart of school has any impact on the data. But I honestly believe that this is a fairly conservative way to start. And I honestly believe the rolling start, starting off slow with low numbers of kids and watching that case count over 41 days really is helpful in our, in our plan. So I wanted to share that. And then the last thing, thanks, Pat, appreciate that. So if you can hit stop share up there, just so. The last thing I'll just point out, trustee Decker asked about, asked about the online academy. And the online academy is important to us, and for a couple of reasons why. Number one, if a student or a staff member feels uncomfortable and not able to come back to in-person learning, we want to provide that option for them. We want to make sure that option is rich and robust and also provides an opportunity so that they can come back at a future date. So the worst-case scenario is we'd have a kid in the online academy who's working on something and then tries to jump back in second semester and has trouble doing that. So it's important to me as an educator that the online academy is staffed by our teachers. And they're working closely with the teachers that are in the school. We've assigned a principal to the online academy that will work directly with those teachers to make sure that we're matching curriculum and we're moving along and we're getting from those students from A to B so that they could jump back into full learning, full in-person learning, perhaps by second semester. The second reason that I think it's critically, critically important that we talk about the online academy is we want to make sure that we meet the needs of our students. I know there was a question in public comment about AP and IB. We're working through some of those, some of those problems and trying to solve those. We have weekly meetings with our high school principals. I was just talking to our high school principals this morning. They have some pretty creative ideas to solve those individual issues around IB or AP. We don't want the online academy to be a barrier for a student. We want to make sure that they still have access to a rich curriculum. Now, it may not be the exact same classes that they were going to take in the regular setting, but we're going to try to match those as closely as possible. At the K-5 level, I think probably what's the most important at the K-5 is that we are following what's happening in the, in the school. So we have a heavy emphasis in school on ELA and math. You'll see that mirrored in the online academy. I feel pretty confident that our online academy is going to be a well-run program. It's going to be productive. I think people are going to find it not the same as in-person because we can't replace in-person learning with an online academy. But it'll be, it'll be a good buffer so that people can use this first semester and then hopefully get back into in-person learning at some point. So I think that's all I had. I'm sorry, that was a lot, apologize. It took probably too long, but I'm going to stop there. I, I would just say my recommendation in the board packet, finally, I guess I should wrap this up. My recommendation is that we start the year in the hybrid model, in-person learning, starting on August 26th. We continue to watch those case counts. We bring back any changes in that decision to the board. But with, with just over two weeks to the start of the year, I feel now is the time that we need to make that decision to help families prepare. So that's my recommendation to start on August 26th in phase one. And then if we were to move to phase two at a later time, I would bring that discussion back to the board.
Any final trustee questions, trustee service?
I have some specific questions for high school. I was kind of curious with this rolling schedule, how many classes do high school students take? Is it six, or is it seven, or is it eight? Because all the high schools are different.
Yes, so great question. So at Hellgate and Sentinel, the kid, they have a seven-period day. Now, not every kid signs up for seven periods, but that's what they have right now, a seven-period day. Under our cohort model and our limiting the mixing of students, we have reduced that seven-period day to a six-period day at Sentinel and Hellgate. At Big Sky, they still have an eight-period day. And the reason we had to do that is this, this scheduling process works really well with even number of periods. It doesn't work well with an odd number of periods. So we reduced from seven to six. Now, that actually provides a couple of bonuses that we didn't even think about when we planned this. But if we go from seven periods to six periods, and with the support of our teacher union, if we ask teachers to teach six out of six classes, then what that does is it lowers the class numbers in all classes. So right now, our teachers teach five out of seven. But under this phasing model, for the first semester, they would teach six out of six classes. And it actually lowers the class count in every class because we have more teachers teaching each period, which is a bonus. What I would tell you too is that, so to answer your question, at Big Sky, they will still have eight classes, but it's spread out over the whole quarter. They're going to rotate between those classes. So the first 11 days, they would take two classes, 11 or 12 days. Then they would rotate to the next two classes for the next 11 or 12 days. At Big Sky and Sentinel, it's longer. They, they're in those classes for 16 days before they rotate. But at Sentinel and Hellgate, it's basically six classes. At Big Sky, it's eight classes.
Okay, well, I'll do our best to try to do that. So any other trustee questions? Oh, sorry, trustee Vogel?
Thank you. I know of a few students who have a strong aversion to wearing a mask. I know of one specifically that has asthma and physically can't breathe. So what are the protocols around if a student wants to be excused from that?
Great question. So one of the things that I've instructed our principals on is we have a process for any possible medical condition that might require accommodations. So basically, what a student would be asking for is an accommodation that would allow them not to wear the mask or wear an alternative mask. So we have invested in some face shields, which may be an option for some students on a limited basis. But what we're going to ask students and families to do is go, is work through that protocol, which requires more than likely a meeting with our school principal and a team of folks, including our school nurse, and to work through that process with that family to determine what are the appropriate accommodations for that student. I say that because we can't just have any student saying, I don't want to wear a mask today. We have to have some sort of protocols in place. And so that's the process that we use right now for appropriate accommodations.
Sorry, trustee Arv Garis?
Thank you. I have one question around the health screening. So you say here, students showing symptoms will be screened at the office and isolated within a location in the school, and, which is great. Parents will be provided directions, a list of symptoms, to conducting health screens at home. My question is, is do you have in the next section, if a student is a positive COVID-19 test, what it's going to take for them to come back to school? My question is, there's going to be a lot of kids that have, you know, upset bellies and fatigue that don't have COVID-19. What's the protocol for them to come back to school?
Yeah, great question. So if a student is determined to have some of those symptoms at school, we will notify parents, ask parents to come pick them up. We'll recommend that they go see a medical professional. We also recommend in our guidance that they have to be symptom-free for basically 24 hours before they can return. So hopefully, there, between the parent and the medical provider, they'll make a determination whether or not they need to get a COVID test. If they decide to get a COVID test, they have to stay out until that test comes back negative. If they decide not to get a COVID test, they'd have to stay out until they're 24 hours symptom-free. That, all of that guidance came straight from the health department. That's not myself making up that guidance, but we would work really closely with the health department around those sorts of issues and protocols.
Any other questions? Oh, thanks. Sorry, trustee Decker, go ahead.
Thanks. I have a question about the, during the hybrid model, about what's going on for the students on their off days. I know the students who are in the online academy, the materials that were posted on the website yesterday indicates that it's the expectation that they'll be a parent or an adult who can help them with remote learning activities for part of that day. But my question is for students who are on the hybrid schedule, I think the thought is that there's going to be some kind of remote learning happening for them? And is that an expectation that they too are going to have that kind of support on those out-of-school days? And then should we have to roll into a phase zero where everyone is doing remote learning? Do those students then be absorbed into the online academy with teachers who have really honed their ability to work in that online context? Or are teachers who were in the classroom with them then going to be transferring their curriculum as they did last spring? And my thought around all of that is, is not a surprise, is about the, the difficulty in providing equity and the ability of families to make those choices. The families who are in the hybrid in-person situation may feel the least able to make the choice that once you start in the online, you're going to be with the whole way. I don't want that to be more of a comment. My question really is about how we're expecting families to engage in remote learning during the high school. the hybrid model.
Yeah, so, I think, let me talk specifically first about the MCPS online academy. We would hope, and I think that's probably why the recommendation was written into the guidance that you read on the website, trustee Decker, we would hope that there's some support for those students that are completely engaged in the virtual academy. We will have teachers to help and facilitate, but we would hope that there's some support also at home for those students that choose to engage in the 100% virtual. Now, again, that's going to vary by grade level, and there might be, need to be more support at the younger grade levels. For those students that are in the hybrid model, on the remote days, it's going to look very similar as it did last spring. Our teachers will provide some lessons that they could do at home, but it's not going to be as extensive, obviously, as they would get in school. It would be great if they have support at home, but we also understand that in that hybrid model, the lessons that we're going to be providing on those off-days are going to have to be done mostly by the student. And so, it's not going to be as robust as they would get in the 100% virtual. If, for some reason, the entire district moved back to Phase 0, then all of our teachers would be providing that remote learning model. The online academy students would stay in the online academy. The MCPS hybrid students would, if we transitioned back to Phase 0, they would receive that instruction from their classroom teacher. We are committed to making sure that our teachers are supported. We've been exploring lots of options for professional development over the next six weeks to help our teachers, not just our online academy teachers, but all of our teachers become more comfortable with that remote learning model, because we know that that's going to come up again and again, and we may have to move back to Phase 0. So, we're committed to making sure we've got that professional development in place. Just had a unique opportunity to talk to some folks that do this type of training around the country, and they're very excited to be able to work with Missoula, which I think is encouraging. So, we have plans in place to get that PD lined out.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes, I want to go back to the testing, if somebody is exposed. If a student is exposed and is, once a person is exposed, the experience that I had is that my husband was exposed, and we went in and got the test, and then had to wait till the test results to come back, and they came back negative. He went back into work the next day, and then they sent him back home, because they said that if you are exposed, that you have to have two tests within 24 hours, and they both need to come back negative. If not, you have to stay away, you know, the 14 days.
Yeah, so, I, and Ellen, the health officer can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I've got this. So, just keep in mind, when you say exposed, there's a couple of different definitions for that, so I want to be really clear. The definition that we use from the county health department is a close contact. So, if I'm a close contact to a confirmed case, the county health department requires me to stay quarantined for 14 days. Doesn't matter if I have a negative test or not, I am required to, or if I have symptoms or not, the county health department will require me to stay quarantined for 14 days if it's confirmed that I'm a close contact to a confirmed case. So, if I have symptoms, then they may require multiple tests, but that's been my general experience in just working through a couple of issues we've had this summer, is that, again, if I'm a close contact, I'm going to be required to quarantine for 14 days. We're going to let the county health department manage that with our students and our staff. So, if our students are determined to be a close contact, the county health department will ask them to quarantine for 14 days. They will also provide the release, so we wouldn't allow that student back in school until they were released through the county health department.
So, that makes me wonder, if you're in quarantine, how do they learn? Do they get remote learning automatically then?
Yeah, great question. I'm glad you asked that. So, it depends on the number of kids. So, a good example would be in a classroom, hopefully, we can limit the number of kids to a small group. But, if an entire class had to quarantine, then, including the teacher, then we would automatically move that class to remote learning for those 14 days. If it's just, maybe I'm a student that has to quarantine because of a close contact that I had outside of school, has nothing to do with school, then I'm home for 14 days, we would ask the teacher to work with that student and that family to keep them up, because they won't be in school for 14 days.
Trustee McDonald?
I really appreciate the teachers and don't think that they get enough credit that they deserve. But, how is this extra work for the teachers?
Yeah, yeah, I probably should have led with that. This is extra work that we're asking them to do, and we've asked them to do that for a long time now, since we started in COVID. It's a lot of extra work, and it is, it's not easy work. It's work that none of us went into the profession thinking we'd have to do. I mean, we didn't go into education with the knowledge that we'd be teaching remotely, and none of us really have those skills. Some of us are much better than others with those technical skills, but, so it is. We have to acknowledge that. It is a lot of extra work. We're asking the teachers to build a class, in-person class, while at the same time building a remote class for the remote days. So, there is a lot of extra work. We're trying to acknowledge that, quite honestly, with the time schedule, making sure that we're using the day, the limited days that we have, giving those days to the teachers in terms of training and professional development, or just time to plan. We're trying to give up as much time as we can. In addition, you'll note on the time schedule, for example, we've got blocks of time before school and after school, where we hope teachers can take the time to use that to help, you know, in their planning process. But, it's never enough time. Our teachers work very, very hard, and they're very dedicated to what they do, and we'll never be able to give them enough time to fully do what we're asking them to do. And so, we're just trying to be aware of that.
Well, I'm aware of that, and I don't know if this is out of line of me to say, but I would just hope that everybody that is participating on this meeting tonight will just take the time to thank a teacher, and have patience, and just work with the teacher instead of against the teacher.
Thanks. Any other questions at this point? So, the opportunity for trustees to ask questions of the superintendent is to allow the trustees to determine what kind of motion they'd like to make, which will then be, we may have a motion on the floor, and then the trustees will provide public comment, and then we'll take public comment, or board comment, and then we'll take public comment on the motion on the floor. So, the recommendation is that there would be a motion that MCPS would restart in-person education in a hybrid Phase 1 model on August 26th, and that it is recommended, and the motion would allow the administration to establish an online 100% virtual option for any student that would like an alternative to in-person learning, with the understanding that this recommendation would be reassessed on a weekly basis, and any significant changes would be brought back to the board. And as, which hasn't been stated, but this would not apply to Seeley Swan High School, since they're in a different situation, so they're coming up with their own plan. So, this motion would cover the schools in Missoula City County that are in the city primarily, rather than Seeley Swan. So, I don't know if anyone has any motion that they'd like to make. Trustee Lorenzen?
So moved, as you stated it.
Oh, so trustee Lorenzen made a motion to, it's captured in our agenda, and it was seconded by trustee Wake, and now there's the time for board comment, and then following that, we will take public comment from everyone who's been listening to the discussion. So, first, any board comment? Trustee Mercer?
So, I heard the county health person say today that we could, if we wanted, open in Phase 2, from a health standpoint. I am persuaded tonight by the idea of practicing for a month and what is proposed. But, I just wanted to give voice to, at least at the elementary school level, there are costs on the other side. I mean, I don't know what a working parent is going to do. I don't. I think the remote learning for first graders is a radically inadequate substitute for in-person. So, I guess I was encouraged to hear that we're practicing with the goal to getting to the modified schedule as soon as we can stomach from a safety standpoint, because I just, I really believe there are costs on the other side, at least for elementary school. And I guess my final comment is, it could make sense to me for the phasing to diverge between the high schools, which are essentially young adults, and the elementary school students, where a first grader can't be left at home alone. And they're less susceptible, and they're more easily co-horted, and I just think the risks and benefits might divert.
Thank you. Any trustee Lorenzen? And I see the trustee Decker also has her hand up.
I really appreciate what trustee Mercer said, especially the question of, do they diverge later? I'm so concerned about the homeless population, the potential that more kids will become homeless. I just think we have got to get these schools open for as many kids as we can. I encourage the administration to have a very defensive position around our resources. If we have anything that could potentially help our kids, don't give it to anybody else. We need it all. We need, and I hope the whole community will look at us and say, "We support our schools. We want our schools back. We're not taking away from the schools now. We're giving to the schools now, the public schools." Thank you.
Thanks. Any other, oh, trustee Decker, I think your hand is up?
Yeah, thanks. So, this is obviously, you know, hugely complex and hugely weighty decision, and I know how much it's been weighing on everyone's minds. I really appreciate health officer Leahy being on the call, and all of her positive comments about the district's plan, and the way that the hybrid model reduces transmission rates by allowing us to start slow and small and with small groups. And if that were the only consideration, I might be feeling differently right now. And I am not second-guessing the science. But, the complexity of the hybrid model for families and for teachers seems immense. And the ability of families to make a choice into the remote learning environment feels deeply inadequate to me. That's not a choice that every family has the equal power and opportunity to make. And so, families are not actually able to really say, unless we are supporting their remote learning option, we're not really able to say if that's a choice everyone is making. And I don't know, I've been trying to make sure that I pay attention to all the public comment that I've received by various channels in our packet, at our previous meetings. I don't know that I've heard a single public comment from a teacher who loves this plan yet and feels really confident about it. I was a preschool teacher, I've been an early childhood teacher for many years, and I know how much practice it takes to do things differently than you've done them before, especially when we're talking about basic health and safety practices. That's actually one of the hardest things, to get people to change their practices around. And I will tell you that my 12-year-old son has never been asked to wash his hands before he goes to lunch in his life, in the public schools, because we talked about it. And it's not that we don't want to do the right thing, I think it's hard. I think we're in a situation where we all wish desperately that our community, locally, at a state level, at federal level, had done everything that we could do to ensure that community spread is on its way down, but we didn't. And here we are, knowing that around the country, cases are on the rise. We're seeing university students return to our community. We don't know the impact that's going to have. And at the same time, families to try to make their economic lives work are going to be seeking out whatever childcare options they can, which may involve them interacting with kids from wide variety of schools and classrooms across the community. So, the social distancing efforts that we're making are very much complicated by that economic reality. I wish that we had a way to identify the students who will need in-person solutions all year, no matter what, and the students who were able to participate in remote learning all year, no matter what. I feel that right now, the plan to let parents choose really privileges those who have resources to make that choice. Those families are in a position to not only do remote learning, but set up sometimes expensive support systems for their families to bolster around outside of the remote learning options. And for that to be the case, we know that we're going to see the gaps increase, because we're not supporting everyone to have that same equity of experience. In fact, the children who have the least ability, their families have the least ability to choose, are going to have the bumpiest, most, the most transitions, the most changes, the most difference to get used to over the course of the year, because we know that this isn't a decision we're really going to be facing once as a school community. This pandemic is not going to be gone until there's a widespread vaccine, and this is a decision we're going to make for a long time. Where we are, you know, it is not my nature to second-guess experts. And goodness knows, Dr. Watson and the administration are experts in the field of education. And goodness knows, Ellen Leahy is an expert about public health. So, I am not second-guessing that. But, what I am trying to do is give voice to the other consequences of this plan that I see in the community, and to the unintended consequences that we might face if we continue down this road, instead of trying to do something that supports families more equitably and more consistently.
Thanks, trustee Decker. Does any other trustee, trustee Garis? I didn't put the R in this time?
Thank you. I'll be brief. I agree with trustee Mercer and everything that he said, and along with that, I think we would feel, as a community, a lot more confident in how we're moving through these phases. If we did have a little bit more of a defined how we're getting into Phase 2, I know it might be impossible, and it's really a big ask of you, Dr. Watson, but I think if there was a, some triggers that said we're getting there, and this is the direction that we want to go, because, you know, as trustee Mercer said, this is, you know, from a financial standpoint, for a lot of families, this is a huge ask in this. So, other than that, I just wanted to say, I recognize all the work. I think everybody does exceptional work. So much thought put into this, so many hours put into this, and it's very much appreciated.
Trustees Service?
I would like to echo, and trustee Mercer talked about maybe diverging for elementary and high school. The concern I have is high school sports, which hasn't been mentioned at all. We're working, this whole plan is conservative, because it's about keeping groups small and not having people mix. But, high school sports are going to have teams with multiple grades, and then they're going to be going back to their classrooms. And it's, according to the plan, we're leaving it up to the Montana High School Association. And I don't know if that, maybe that's the best for our district.
Any other trustee comments? Seeing none, I'll just add one final comment. I appreciate all the work that everyone's done. I'm sure that when we all went into the school year this past year, we didn't expect anything like this, that we would be making these decisions at the time. As trustee Decker pointed out, there are going to be gaps. I appreciate what trustee Mercer and trustee Service and trustee Garis have said in terms of, we want to try to make sure we're being as equitable as we can and keep people on track, whether you're an IEP student, or you're in a gifted program, or you want AP classes, or you need remedial help. So, the plan, as best as I can see, allows for flexibility to try to do that. And of course, as trustee McDonald pointed out, it puts a big ask on our teachers, and we wouldn't be asking, except that the world has really fundamentally changed, and we still want to be able to provide good public school education. So, I do support the motion, and I just want to thank everybody, including working with the city health, county health department, working with the university, working with your staff. So, thank you. And now, if no one else on the board has any comments?
Just add one thing. Just wanted to clarify something trustee, I'm sorry, Chair Holland said about Seeley Lake. I just want to be clear on this. Seeley Lake Seeley Lake is following all of our same protocols and our plans. They're also doing intensive block schedule to, in order to limit the mixing of kids throughout the day. The one difference with Seeley is because their numbers are so small, they don't really need to start in phase one in a hybrid model, they can have kids there every day and still maintain physical distancing. So Seeley is going to start in phase two, intensive block schedule, but they'll be having students there every day.
Thanks for that clarification. I'm sorry I wasn't clear, clearer. And so now we'll take public comment. It's hard for me to see who had hands up first, so I'll allow Hatton to call on people. As we indicated in public comment on the non-agenda items, if you can state your first and last name, spell either name if it has an unusual spelling, and try to limit your comments to three minutes, in case there are going to be a lot of comment. As many people know, you can submit written comments either via email, or in writing, by letter, and there are portals for that on the MCPS website. So if you think your comments, you'd like to go into more detail, we would appreciate hearing from you at length, but we would ask you to do so in writing rather than now. So with that, I'll turn it over to Hatton to start identifying those who'd like to make public comment.
Thank you Chair Holland. Just to let the board know, we have just about 10 people with hands raised, a few more, and about seven that would like their comments read. So I'll go in that order. For those that have joined on the telephone, a reminder, if you would like to make public comment, you can raise your hand on the telephone by pressing star nine on your telephone keypad. The first individual with their hand raised is Marty Cardos. If you could unmute and make your comment, please.
Yeah, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Yeah, I just first want to say that I really appreciate all the thought that's gone into this, and I recognize that how difficult, I recognize how difficult it is to come to a decision about whether to open in person or not. I think it's really important that we look at what's actually happening in the world right now, though. While I want, and I think all parents want, our kids to go back to school in person, the reality is that cases are going up, not down, and they're not flat. And we also know that when we put people together inside buildings, that transmission goes up. So we have the University of Montana coming back to in-person classes, with kids coming from all across the country to live in dorms here in Missoula. And we're going to pack kids into schoolrooms in person. And there's a good reason that many of us have been social distancing. For example, your board has been meeting remotely until now, for a very good reason. So we put people in schools together, and this is obviously going to increase the transmission rate. And I would, I would propose that the risk that the superintendent has described is actually quite understated. The risk isn't just that transmission is going to happen, the risk is that people are going to die. And it's quite likely that putting kids back into school in person is going to result in students, teachers, or family members and other community members losing their lives. And you all have to be okay with taking that risk in a proven, if you approve this plan, in my opinion. And there are two other things I'd like to propose, and that one is that the board should request hard numbers on thresholds that will trigger moving between phases. And the main reason I mention this is that the thresholds that the superintendent was talking about a few weeks ago, in particular during the PTA meeting with students at Rattlesnake Elementary, where my students go, the thresholds that he was discussing and using to move from phase zero to start in phase one, rather than phase zero, have not been met. But the proposal is to start in phase one, for some reason, which I don't understand, and I would like to be explained. And I suggest that you and the board should ask the superintendent, explain the rationale there. The second is that, just to comment on the survey, so I took the survey, and many of us in the community took the survey, under the assumption that the decision to go back to school would be based on the trajectory of the disease. And it's obvious that starting in phase one, rather than phase zero, which I recognize is a really hard question, a really hard decision for many reasons, is not being made based on disease trajectory, but rather considerations of what some parents would refer. And I realize how hard this decision is, but it's obvious that the decision is being made for political reasons and not for public health reasons. Thanks. That's all, that's my whole comment. Thank you.
Thanks. And just for a minute, it looks like your last name is spelled K-A-R-D-O-S. Is that correct?
Yes, my name is Marty, M-A-R-T-Y, and last name is K-A-R-D-O-S. I have two, two boys at Rattlesnake Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair Holland. Just a few other reminders for those making public comment. We do seek to limit public comment to three minutes per person. Please say and spell your name, because your username on Zoom may not indicate your full name. And again, if you are joining on Zoom and you want to raise your hand, you click Participants at the bottom, scroll to the bottom of the participant list, and choose Raise Hand. On the phone, press star nine. The next person for public comment is M.E. You can go ahead and unmute yourself and make your comment.
Thank you. I would like to read a letter that I wrote to the board. I am an MCPS teacher, and I am deeply concerned about reopening our schools in any kind of in-person model. There is no doubt that the best way to teach children is in person. However, our first duty must be to ensure the safety and security of every person in the schools. Learning cannot happen without first giving safe and secure. Reopening our schools to in-person learning is neither safe nor secure. As we have seen in Indiana, Florida, Arizona, and other states, when the schools reopen, COVID-19 quickly spreads in large numbers, and the schools are forced to quarantine students and staff, and often close the schools entirely. Only yesterday, the American Academy of Pediatrics released a report that 380,000 children have tested positive for COVID-19 since the onset of the pandemic. Of those 380,000 children, 179,990 new child cases have been reported from seven-nine through eight-six. That is a 90% increase in child cases over four weeks. But it is not just our students who will be put at risk by returning to the classroom. Every teacher, support staff, and administrator will be put at risk of contracting COVID-19 by being forced to return to school. Our family members will be put at risk. All of the effort that we have each put into keeping ourselves and our families safe will be entirely negated by returning to the classroom. My husband is 71 years old. Every year, I bring home a cold virus or two. Every year, I get sick for a few days. He gets sick for several weeks from the exact same virus. And now you want me to expose him to a virus that could kill him. Let me make it absolutely clear. I love teaching. I love my students, and I love being in my classroom. However, I did not sign up for this kind of risk when I signed my MCPS contract. Out of the more than 700 MCPS teachers, over 120 have applied to be allowed to telecommute. Now, we're being told that human resources will be the ones making the final decision on who should be allowed to telecommute and who should not. This is not a decision that HR should be allowed to make. No one should be allowed to gamble with our health and our lives. Teachers demonstrated last spring that with very little training or preparation, we were able to teach online and keep ourselves and our students safe. Was it perfect? Absolutely not. But no one contracted COVID-19. No one died. Dr. Watson states that MCPS believes that in-person learning is important, but the return to school also places students and staff at risk for contracting COVID-19. We expect that any return to in-person learning will result in transmission and positive cases of COVID-19. My question for you is, how can you possibly justify placing us at that kind of risk? How can you possibly justify gambling with our lives like this? This is the first in-person trustee meeting for months, and yet you will only allow the public to participate online because of the risk of having a large crowd in a small place.
Ms. Ellen, you have reached more than three minutes.
Yet you expect us to. I urge you to make a sensible safety decision, and allow us to build on what we have already successfully done. Allow us to teach all students remotely with the same curriculum developed by MCPS teachers to meet the needs of MCPS students. Thank you. That is the end.
Thank you. And as I indicated at the beginning of taking public comment, if you have something in writing, please submit it in writing, or if you have longer comments that you'd like to make, please submit them via email or in writing. And at this meeting, if we can limit public comment to around three minutes, that will allow us to move forward in hearing from all the public who wants to make comment. So, thank you.
Okay, the next raised hand is from A.S. Fortner. Go ahead and unmute, state your full name, and make your comment.
Yes, Aaron Fortner, A-A-R-O-N-F-O-R-T-N-E-R. Thank you all for your time this evening. In the spring, we chose to close our schools, and Missoula was able to keep our most vulnerable population safe. We had 40 cases for weeks, yet once we moved back into physical spaces through the summer, case loads increased markedly. Now we move forward with the hope, with hoping that the health guidelines for safe return to school will keep our kids and communities safe, and that families and our community will continue to have trust in our decisions. A multiplicity of professional, medical, and scientific organizations have consensus. In order for communities to safely return to school, cases should be a primary metric for community, and determining cases require a robust and expedient testing system in order to impede the spread of COVID-19. The guidelines for safer return rely on rapid testing and thorough and expedient contact tracing. And as Rob has mentioned, the R-value will be a key indicator. A report in the medical journal, The Lancet cites a need for the optimization of testing and contact tracing, that once testing delays become three days or longer, perfect contact tracing cannot bring R-values below one. Today, I contacted every medical facility reported on the NC County Health Department website. Of those agencies, everyone cited a minimum time of results between three to five business days, including Missoula County Health Department. At this point, neither quick results or effective contact tracing are reality. The county attempted surveillance testing in late July, but was quickly overwhelmed by symptomatic cases. The time for test results ballooned to 15 days. This backlog was a result of people moving back into physical spaces in the community, but certainly not to the extent of what it will look like when we return to school. A closed system presents significantly more risk for transmission, and outside spaces will lose viability as the weather turns cold. Some of our teachers will immediately be in close and extended contacts with dozens, if not hundreds, of people every day. The increase in the probability of transmission of the virus will become exponential in nature. Campus is officially open for all juniors and seniors for lunch, as of what we know most recently, increasing the possibility of community transmission and rendering the cohorting of students pointless. I believe that everyone wants to act in good faith. They want to be responsible for the safety and well-being of their community members, yet not everyone has those sort of accesses to affordable healthcare. Some tests can run up to $175. The rest result may be a lack of testing for our students, and we'd essentially be flying by blind, relying on identifying the worst of cases, and teachers are not medically qualified to make those calls. It will be easy to come significantly behind in our efforts rapidly and effectively respond to any potential outbreak within our schools and our health system will be quickly overwhelmed. Safe return to school relies upon the efficacy of comprehensive and rapid testing. At this point, it is not a guarantee. It appears in fact to be nearly impossible. We cannot, at this point, safely return to school in person.
Thank you for your comment. And Hatton?
Yes, the next.
The next individual for public comment is Alex Sobin. Go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Sure, my name is Alex Sobin, A-L-E-X-S-O-B-I-N. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm a high school teacher at Sentinel High School. And I just want to start by saying that as staff members, we were given the option to return to work in one of two modalities. Either fully online, which we were led to believe required us to have some kind of ADA designation, or pre-existing condition, or in the phased model. We had to assess the risk based on the information we were given at the end of July, when cases were far lower, and we had assurances from Dr. Watson that the case numbers in Missoula County and the data from the Health Department would inform his decisions. Since that time, community pressures have caused him to change his plan to the point that it no longer seems to take health and safety into account. He seems to be giving little weight to the fact that Montana's transmission rates are the fourth highest in the entire country. And I know we focus on Missoula County's transmission rates, but that's flawed because of lack of Sentinel testing in the area, as Aaron spoke to earlier. Our Health Department is currently lagging behind, again, as Aaron spoke to, in the tests that are being conducted, and there is an extreme backlog on those results. As well as the fact that the very organization that he keeps citing, the American Academy of Pediatrics, has just released a follow-up statement in July that cautions schools against any in-person learning if cases were not declining and testing and contact tracing was not possible. Add to that the latest data from the AAP that COVID cases in children have jumped 40% in the past two weeks, directly tied to school reopening. And I cannot help but feel that a return to in-person learning is an unwelcome experiment, and one that is bearing out disturbing data in the other parts of the country. Dr. Watson said himself that there would be cases associated with reopening. Why is that a risk we are comfortable taking? So much of the long-term effects of this disease are unknown, and disturbing inflammatory conditions are already beginning to show up in children and infants who have positive COVID cases. Combine this with the fact that children ages 10 through 19 have similar viral load to adults, and are therefore just as effective at spreading the virus, and we have a situation where not only students and staff are at risk of adverse health effects or death, but also students' families, friends, coworkers, and teammates. I urge you to consider online learning until that time that Missoula County has lower transmission rates and is better equipped to conduct testing and contact tracing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And just to clarify, the suggestion to submit written comments is, if your comments will take longer than three minutes, which is our typical limit for verbal public comment at our meetings, we have been reviewing them, they're, all the trustees have access to all public comment. And so if you have comments that would exceed the three-minute mark, that's why I'm suggesting you submit them in writing. But anyone who wants to make public comment tonight, we will hear from you. So I'll let Hatton call on the next raised hand.
Thank you Chair Holland. In order to go somewhat in order, I'm going to pause on the raised hands and read some of the comments which were typed into the chat prior to these raised hands. We have a comment from Kathleen Kennedy, K-E-N-N-E-D-Y. I hated answering that I preferred in-person, knowing that, knowing what I knew about the model being proposed. There should have been more information offered before that question was posed. We have an additional public comment from Mona Bachmann, B-A-C-H-M-A-N-N. For families who are not comfortable sending students to school in the hybrid model, we need a lot more information about the online academy. We are told that someone from the, from the MCPS will be teaching, not teachers, from the students' own school. We do need to know much more about that academy in order to decide about enrollment. It is also not clear to many of us what will be happening in the hybrid model during the three days a week that the students are not in school. Finally, many families have pointed out that the district is using one set of data that does not correspond to other reliable information about the rise in COVID cases in the county. We have an additional public comment from Carleen Hathaway, H-A-T-H-A-W-A-Y. How does the staff ID a student that has that accommodation? Can we acknowledge that paraeducators will be in need of supporting slash training for online-like teachers? Will we be doing a lot of the lessons and need train, we will, excuse me, we will be doing a lot of the lessons and need training too? An additional written comment from Rebecca Brooks. In regards to high, B-R-O-O-K-S, excuse me, in regards to high school teachers, what is the expectation for them ensure, I think, I believe, to ensure children are wearing masks appropriately? And with that, I will identify the next individual with a raised hand, Sarah Hall. You can unmute yourself and make your comment.
Thank you so much. Thank you for allowing so many of us to make public comment, and thank you trustee Decker.
and thank you, trustees, for the work you've been doing to support our entire MCPS community. I'm a high school teacher at Sentinel High School here in Missoula, and I want to comment just a little bit on the open campus lunch policy. Superintendent Watson's plan states in part that principals will work out lunch access points so that students can maintain smaller groups. I can assure you, there will be no such thing as smaller groups when upperclassmen are allowed to leave campus. Since we're entering potentially into a hybrid model based on current COVID-19 numbers and in an attempt to slow the spread of the virus, I'm very confused over having an open campus lunch for any students. Individual students will not be leaving in individual cars and going to individual neighborhood homes for a quick lunch. They'll be leaving in groups, joining friends in cars, masks forgotten, being typical teenagers. They'll swarm area shops and fast food restaurants like usual. We here in Missoula have seen shop closures online with the infected employee's last shift information being shared for potential close contact tracing. How will this work if fifty or more students are going in and out on a daily basis at lunch? Or how will it work if students are visiting friends on campus, where already Greek row is in full party mode? Our cohort group lock scheduling was meant to be a way to keep students safer by not mixing groups. We would only have passing periods to start school, for lunch, and to end school, and our groups would be neat and contained. Now, with half of the students being allowed to leave campus, that containment is moot. Student groups will mix daily as they always have, and then will return to classrooms to share all those new contacts with all of us, students and staff alike. Would lunch in a classroom be easy? No. Do I want to have lunch with my students in my classroom without masks? No. But unless we keep students in as much of a protected bubble as we can, we really aren't doing anything to mitigate rapid virus transmission. I, for one, believe stopping the spread of COVID-19 is more important than students eating fast food for lunch and then returning to our classrooms. And I have been a teacher who has been working extensively all summer long on how to better prepare myself to teach in a remote setting. I definitely urge the Board of Trustees to consider us returning to school in a remote setting until the virus is under control. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next public comment is from Charlotte Creakmore. Go ahead and unmute your mic and make your public comment.
I have nothing that I've written and planned for this comment. I just wanted to simply say I was a school teacher before. I am a healthcare provider now. I'm also a single mom of three children, one in elementary, one in middle school, one in high school. And I feel super uncomfortable about sending my children into Class Five Rapids with someone practicing how to row, I guess I would say it, just being honest about that. I could sum it up and just keep it super short and say, I still, when I look at the online academy website, don't understand how we sign up tomorrow, what time we do that, and what we would do for high school students with classes. I feel super confident about remote learning if teachers were able to be invested and be supported in that, just based on my own experiences with remote learning throughout my academic career. I wish that there was a little more focus there and look forward to understanding more about it. And I don't feel comfortable because pertussis is not like COVID in any way, shape, or form. Pertussis is treated with an antibiotic, and you might get a nasty cough. COVID is much more different, as we all know, and in no way does it feel like it's controlled. So I just wanted to thank everyone for all of your work. I know it's extremely challenging from a Health Department perspective, also from a public school's perspective, to come up with a plan here. Thanks again for your work. And I do feel it's rather unsafe to go at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And to let the trustees know, we have about twenty-four additional hands raised in line. The next individual is Beth Cole. Go ahead and unmute your mic and make your comment.
Hi, my name is Beth Cole, B-E-T-H-C-O-L-E. I'm a teacher at Hellgate High School. Part of the plan for returning to school is the creation of fewer cohort groups to reduce the number of contact students and teachers experienced throughout the day. At a high school level, this is accomplished by creating 2.25-hour teaching blocks twice a day. Half of the registered students will attend two classes two days each week, while the other half completes online lessons, and then the schedule will be reversed. While this plan somewhat reduces the number of exposures, 2.25-hour class blocks are not pedagogically sound. While I agree in-person learning is best for students under normal circumstances, the significant change to our schedule could have negative impact on learning. Students will be required to sit for hours, receive condensed content, and have limited opportunities to engage in interactive teaching, strategies, and project-based learning. There are few or no resources available online for teaching in this long of time blocks. Most available research has been conducted on ninety-minute periods and not 135-minute periods. And given that there are less than two weeks until we are expected to return, it appears no professional development will be provided to teachers prior to opening. Any professional development we receive will be while we are constructing our classes or after our class blocks have completed. Our goal should be to create a plan that best meets the safety and educational needs of our students. Reopening while cases are rising, there's community spread, and a schedule that won't meet the educational objectives appears to meet none of our goals. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. The next raised hand is from Tom McClintock. Go ahead and unmute your mic.
Good evening, MCPS trustees and members of the Missoula community. My name is Tom McClintock, M-C-C-L-I-N-T-O-C-K. I'm the spouse of a MCPS educator. I'm also a lifelong Missoulian and MCPS and U-M alum. I'd like to start by thanking Trustee Decker especially for her comments tonight. And I would like to note, as someone working on the university's reopening plans, I recognize just how hard this work is. I speak out tonight in opposition to the proposed return to in-person instruction, no matter how limited, and advocate for returning to Phase Zero until we see an actual decline in cases, as was originally promised. I am aware of all of the studies and even basic common sense that says our children learn best when they're in the classroom, supported by talented educators and surrounded by peers. But children also learn best when they, their teachers, and their families aren't at risk for contracting a dangerous and deadly disease. Nearly 400,000 children in the U.S. have already been diagnosed with COVID, and that's with the vast majority of them having been home for the past several months. And there's been a 90% increase in the number of COVID-19 cases among children in the United States over the last four weeks, according to a new analysis by the American Academy of Pediatrics. What's going to happen when we send them all back to school? Right now, the state of Montana is registering anywhere between sixty to 200 new cases on a daily basis. Missoula alone has 92 active cases, with new ones being added to that total nearly every day, and that doesn't even take into account the delays in testing. Countless news reports are being written about schools in other parts of the country that opened and almost immediately had to shut back down when cases spiked. Back in July, Superintendent Watson promised us an evidence-based plan and said that if the situation were getting worse, we would return in Phase Zero. It appears now that the evidence was picked for its agreement with this preordained plan or simply ignored, and poorly worded questions were sent to parents in an effort to bow to the pressure of those who desire reopening. In recent comments to K-PAC, he cites the number of parents who want to return to in-person instruction, but leaves out feedback from educators who, it appears, are overwhelmingly concerned with this proposed plan and fearful of the certain disruption when we're inevitably forced to shut back down. This disruption caused by having to quarantine potentially multiple times could easily impact children's mental health much more than a stable environment with admittedly limited interaction, not to mention the trauma that will result if a parent, grandparent, teacher, or classmate dies of this. Already, we've seen MCPS walking back from CDC's safe opening guidance. Example, six feet of distancing has become three, despite apparent available classrooms in alternate locations. Remote work option for staff seems limited by the online academy staffing requirements, not for all staff who might need or even prefer it. By pursuing this course of action, we're setting ourselves up for failure, and we are risking the health and lives of our children and families. To quote one Georgia grandfather, his granddaughter's school, quote, "sent him a potential death sentence home when they reopened." I ask you now if you're willing to do that to our children, and are you willing to do that to their parents and grandparents? Are you willing to do that to the dedicated teachers, janitors, lunch aids, secretaries, and other staff who serve this district? Are you willing to sacrifice our families? On the MCPS homepage, in response to the BLM protests, is a statement from Superintendent Watson that includes the following. Quote, "As educators, we know the importance of safety and the critical tie to student success. We know that students can't learn when they don't feel safe." Can you truly say that this will help our kids feel safe? Moreover, how many children and other members of our school family will it take before you realize you've made the wrong choice? If you want to thank a teacher, as one trustee said, thank them by not asking them to risk their lives more than they already do as educators in the United States. This choice, if final, risks their lives and those of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next public comment is from Brittany. If you would unmute your mic, state your full name, and make your comment.
Hi, my name is Brittany McPherson, M-C-P-H-E-R-S-O-N. I just wanted to say thank you. This is a hard decision to make for everybody. You guys have put a lot of work into it. I appreciate that. And I just wanted to second Trustee Decker's comments about this being not much of a decision at all for most of us. With choosing remote learning or in-person learning, it's more defined by what our circumstances are, and it's a sacrifice for everybody. My family is choosing, I suppose, the remote learning option due to health conditions. But it's not ideal for us, and I know that others aren't able to make that choice. They're going back to school for childcare options. And I just wish that we could have been a little bit more creative with making a remote learning situation available for everybody to keep everyone safe. And then the 36% that stated that they needed childcare, if this school could have done some legwork to have remote learning areas available for those kids where they could be cared for by an adult at their parents are working. And then I just, after reading the information online, I'm a little confused about the remote learning. And I'm hoping that maybe some more information will come out before the signup period. The format, it seems like there was a block of time for elementary school that was 8:30 to 1:30, but they're only going to be online for two hours during that. And as a mom with not only an elementary schooler, I also have toddlers and a baby, so flexibility is super important for us. And I'm keeping my older one at home, and I might not be able to log on right at 11:30 and make sure she's ready for her Zoom meeting or the virtual classroom. And I was just hoping that, especially in those younger grades, that there might be a little bit more flexibility as there was with the remote learning in the spring. It's hard for my family to be tied down to a rigid schedule. And again, I haven't seen all the information, so I'm looking forward to seeing what comes out there. And maybe it will be all ironed out already. So thanks for your time with that. And I guess my last question is, if things don't work out, or my last comment would be, with the remote learning situation, I just wonder if it's not a good fit for our family. I'm considering homeschooling, but I would like to keep our spot in elementary school for next year. We're at Jeanette Rankin, which is already full. And I would be pretty disappointed if we pull out this year because of health reasons, if we lose our spot for the future. So that's something that we're struggling with as well. So thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate it. You guys are working hard. I know. It's a big decision. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next comment is from Peggy Correll. If you'd like to unmute your mic and make your comment.
Hi, good evening. My name is Peggy Correll, spelled C-O-R-D-E-L-L. I am both a retired MCPS teacher and a grandmother. I want to thank you for all the work you've done on the plan to reopen Missoula's public schools, but my comment has to do with its timing. We should be looking at what's happening with positive cases of COVID and quarantines in schools already in session in other parts of the country. COVID knows no boundaries, and historically, Montana has seen spikes in COVID cases following holidays. If you push back the start date of school reopening in hybrid model to two weeks after Labor Day, I think you would make a different recommendation as to which phase to begin schooling and save yourselves some angst and heartache. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next comment is from John J. Ewan. Please unmute and make your comment.
I'm sorry. It took me a minute to unmute. I'm John Ewan, spelled E-W-A-N. The survey results have been referred to several times, but I'm not confident the questions on the survey were asked in a manner that accurately reflects the intentions of people answering it. Nor does it take into account the infection rates that have been reported since the survey was given. So I'd like to ask all participants watching from home to simply type the word "home" in the chat. If they're here to tell the board they do not believe the return to in-person instruction is the right move at this time. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Hatton. How many other people have hands raised? Are there still written comments coming in, so we should switch back and forth?
We have twenty additional people with their hands raised and two written comments to make, and about five more people. The next individual in line is Kristi Muir. Please unmute and make your comment.
Hey, guys. My name's Kristi Muir. I am a second-grade teacher at Lewis and Clark School. Again, I thank everybody for all of their work. This is not a position I would wish on anyone. And I have heard at some point we're going to be hearing from teachers who have been doing the ramp-up. And I can say I went in for a couple of hours to volunteer at the ramp-up and got to read with a few of my kids from last year. And I can't tell you how much I miss being with kids. It was really hard. And I really, 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 really wanted to see them. That said, one today took her mask off, said she had a runny nose, and it was hard to wear her mask with a runny nose. She's seven. And kids have runny noses all year long. And I couldn't stay six feet away. I couldn't really stay three feet away and help them with their reading. It was more like two feet, so we could both see the pages. That said, it was incredible. I felt like a teacher. I could interact with them in a way that I can't do online. And so it's just a messy, terrible decision to have to try and make. I would not say that I'm comfortable going back at all. However, I do want to go back for those kids, especially like Trustee Decker mentioned, that his parents don't even have the ability to be here at this meeting because they're working, and they have five kids at home. And those kids that don't have another option at all and don't even really have a voice. If there was some way to distill those kids down and be able to teach them in person in small groups, and of course, I would love to have all the kids, but the kids that can stay home, if they can, it just seems like there's got to be a way to think outside the box. I mean, today I was like, I'll drive to kids' houses and read with them on their front porches. Like, that's how badly I wanted to do it. And so I know that this is not an easy decision, and there isn't an answer that's ever going to serve anyone. I just would say, I really want to speak up for those kids and those families that don't have a choice and that can't even come to this meeting and don't even know how to log into this meeting, and that they're not being represented just by the fact that our society is inept at solving this problem. And we can't forget about them. And just that, you know, the mask came off today with a runny nose. And just that, you know, the mask came off today with a runny nose. Should that kiddo even have been there? It's going to be an issue all year. So I'm sorry I don't offer a lot of solutions. I'm just bringing my passion and my love for teaching kids, and if there's any way to serve those kids that need it, perhaps more than kids that can't afford to stay home in any form, I'd be in for that. And again, the last thing I'll say, I know about five seconds left, is I was trusting the board to say that I wouldn't have to go back if there was a steep inclining cases. That was kind of a red line, a line in the sand for me, and cases are going up now, and we're being asked to go back. So now I don't know what the line is, and that's hard for me as a teacher because I felt like I could trust the people in charge, and now that seems fluid. So teachers are going to need some reassurance there, and I don't know what that is right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I see that your last name is spelled M-E-U-R-E-R. Is that correct, Ms. Muir?
Yes, thank you. I forgot that point, but that's correct on my Zoom profile.
Thanks. And Hatton, next.
Okay, the next in line is Catherine DeGrande-Pree. Go ahead and unmute your mic, spell your name, and make your comment.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, my name is Katie DeGrande-Pree, last name spelled D-E-G-R-A-N-D-P-R-E. And I first want to say that I really appreciate all the comments that we've had tonight. I think there's a lot of thoughtfulness going on in this meeting, which I really appreciate. And I also genuinely appreciate that there's been a ton of planning going into reopening schools. But I do have one specific concern in terms of contacts and class sizes, and I really appreciate that our district has made a lot of efforts to keep class sizes small. However, a couple of weeks ago, I was watching a video, a daily coronavirus update from Missoula County, and I believe this one was filmed by Cindy Farr, our incident commander for Missoula County Health. And she mentioned at least five times in that video that it was very important to keep your close contacts to about five people or fewer. And then I looked at my class sizes and realized that when switching from periods one and two to periods three and four, I would be possibly in contact with 120 students. And a close contact in that video was stated to be within a confined space within the distance of six feet. And that's the reality of my classroom. So there's no way that I can protect my family with having 120 close contacts. And I know that there's been a lot of just out contacts and class sizes, but perhaps that number itself has not been set out there and considered. And so when we're looking at potentially one person getting sick in a situation where there could be 120 close contacts, I feel like my concern is that that could quickly spiral out of control. And I also think that it's really easy for us to conceive of schools and teachers as sort of insular communities, but the reality is we're all connected to the Missoula community. And I worry that reopening in this way, when cases are going up, could really quickly overwhelm the Missoula city-county testing capabilities that we have set up, which would have huge ramifications for other populations within our city. And so I would urge the board to consider remote learning. Lots of people have already made comments regarding our learning and teachers' learning during remote learning, and that concludes my comment. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. The next in line is Galaxy S9 Plus. Please unmute, state your full name, and make your comment. Galaxy S9 Plus, if you'd still like to make a comment, please unmute and make your comment. Okay, we're going to move on to Richard Derry. Please unmute and make your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that the board has done an excellent job of knocking at all the options for returning our child to school. However, the very first thought in every educator's mind and every board member or trustee's mind should be safety. Not only the safety of the students, but the safety of the teachers that are teaching them. My child happens to go to Sealy Lake High School, Sealy Swan High School. Their ventilation system cannot be filtered to the point where it would be a HEPA-compliant type facility. You talk about going back to school as if they don't go back to school in a classroom right this minute, that it will somehow be detrimental to their overall learning throughout life. It will not. As we've learned in Georgia, Texas, Florida, South Carolina, and many other states, going back to in-face public education is not applicable at this time. The safety of our students, the safety of our teachers, and the safety of our staff is what should guide this. And the metrics have shown that Missoula County is fluctuating in an up-and-down manner, but overall, the cases are going up, the deaths are going up, the hospitalizations are going up, and they are not going to stop if you take our students back to school. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'll insert two of our written comments at this point. One is from Kate Reddick, R-E-D-D-I-C-K. "I would like to acknowledge the hard work that the board has done so far. I couldn't help but notice, though, that it was said that the hybrid model does not offer a robust learning experience when they are doing remote learning..." Excuse me. "...when they are doing remote learning on their non-in-person days, which was pretty alarming to me. Maybe we should be trying to perfect one model for all students." Thank you. Second comment is from Lisa Firehammer, F-I-R-E-H-A-M-M-E-R. "Is it too late to set up remote childcare? MCPS has shown it can pivot quickly." Chair Hahn, there was a public comment made where someone asked for individuals to type the word "home" into the chat. Would you like me to let you know how many individuals made that or record that for later? Based on these records, 64 individuals typed the word "home" into the chat. The next public comment in line is from Leslie. Please go ahead and unmute, state your full name, and make your comment.
Hello?
Go right ahead.
Hello. My name is not Leslie, it's Mike, but we are both McLintock's. Full disclosure, we are Tom McLintock's parents and therefore Marissa McLintock's in-laws. I am a retired professor from the University of Montana, and therefore, all of my teaching experience for the odd years was in-person, much, I think, to the dismay of some of my students. I would say that I was most successful as a teacher when I stuck to a text and explored it. So I want to, among other things, remind the board of its own agenda by quoting from the Agenda items. This is... This is... We expect that any return to in-person learning will result in transmission and positive cases of COVID-19. And I think we have heard enough science from enough different people to say that that's probably an understatement. Now, the board does go on to say immediately, "This risk needs to be managed." I kind of think that that second sentence would have been right at home in at least one school district in Georgia a few weeks ago. The one that is now looking at 900 cases requiring all of those 900 people to self-isolate. Now, Leslie and I have voluntarily self-isolated. We're just being prudent for a couple of health reasons. We both have conditions. And we have maintained that self-isolation pretty well because Tom and Marissa help us out. If Marissa... Here. I was thinking, I've been in every high school in Missoula, and I know them all fairly well. I was thinking about walking down the hallways of Hell Gate. I was thinking about the air circulation systems in the high schools, and I was thinking about the increasingly infamous propensity of COVID to transmit itself by aerosols. Some of those aerosols, many of those aerosols are small enough to hang in the air. I do not think you can walk down at least the hallways of Hell Gate, and in parts of Sentinel and even in parts of Big Sky. I do not think you can walk down those hallway without passing through aerosols left behind even many minutes, even an hour before, by an innocent supercarrier. I do not think that this is managing the risk. And as Leslie reminded me, I should say thank you. Oh, McLintock, as you can probably see on the screen, is spelled M-C-C-L-I-N-T-O-C-K. Leslie assured me I don't need to spell Mike for you. Thank you for the time. Good luck.
Thank you very much. The next in line is Ashley Hilliard. Go ahead and unmute, state your full name, and make your comment.
Thank you. My name is Ashley Hilliard, H-I-L-L-I-A-R-D. I have a sixth grader, a fourth grader, and a kindergartner at MCPS. I also have a baby right here, so if he's loud, I'm sorry. I have to say that I'm a little bit confused. If we know that we're in the middle of a pandemic and that children need safe spaces to learn, why didn't we start with where we were at last spring and work with the community to make those safe learning spaces with the community instead of working in silos with the end goal to just get back to in-person classes? There's a difference between safe learning spaces in the community and in-person class. Since my last comment at the last coordinating and offering the suggestion that MCPS play a prominent role as a community hub, I have reached out to Boys and Girls Club, Healthy Start Missoula, The Parenting Place, ASUM Childcare, 406 Families, A Parenting Group in Billings, which was suggested by The Parenting Place, Families First, the superintendent, and the principals of my two schools seeking additional information to make a plan for my family, and the information I received was a resounding, "We don't have any information for you." I am in my final semester of my master's in public health. I work as a research analyst for the university. I feel very capable of navigating and gathering information, and there is simply not enough information. I communicated to the superintendent and the principals of my schools that I had serious concerns about the survey. I truly believe that they were not... Their informed consent was not reached with the participants of that survey. The parents simply did not have enough information to answer the questions included in that survey. I stressed... I said that already. Sorry. This is hard with a baby. I also stressed that some of those answers be made optional until details of the Online Learning Academy were released because that would inevitably change those responses. The Online Academy for my family means that while I work remotely from home and utilize my internet, my three children will need to be online for two hours synchronous instruction windows between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 1:30 p.m. My availability to supervise my children's learning would not be until after 2:00 p.m. In addition, attempting to keep all three of my children with their synchronous learning online at the same time that I need to be online working will reduce my internet bandwidth, effectively making it impossible for any of my children or myself to be effective during those hours online. I stated at the last meeting that this choice feels involuntary and forced. Those who have the means to be home, enough space, and internet, and supervision by an adult or parent or guardian will be those who stay home. Even as I want my children to stay online, under the current information that I have, I simply cannot meet those requirements. The Online Academy is not an option that is equitably available to all students. And I'll repeat, the Online Academy is not an equitable option for all MCPS students. Other questions? If my child is in-person and learning online three days a week, will they need to be online during the hours that I am working remotely? How can I do that without crashing my internet? How many of your staff have already or are planning on resigning? What about your substitute pool? Do you have enough staff to return in-person? Also, if you're still able... If you're still making decisions about teaching staff over the next couple of weeks, how are we possibly starting on time on August 26th in-person? If my child with anxiety, which manifests as upset stomach, will she be excluded from school each time she has upset stomach? The first time my kindergartner catches a cold, will he be out of school for two weeks to return and catch the next cold and be out of school again for two weeks? What about the stigma of being removed from the classroom like that? I've also paid for an instrument mental for a band class that appears that my child would not be able to participate in. This option, these options, are not what we have asked you as board members and as work plan members to put together for all families. We need one option that's going to work. Do not pass this tonight. Extend, wait, whatever you need to do, give the families of MCPS an option that we can all start together. Work with your community, knock down the silos. This is Missoula! We can do this! We have the resources to do this! There is no reason why we can't work together to make this work for all of these kids.
Thank you very much. The next individual in line is Amy Miller. Please unmute and make your comment.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. First of all, I want to say that I really appreciate all the hard work that you have put into this planning and decision-making, and I have so many things that are on my mind, and I feel a little anxious about the fact... First of all, I'm a teacher at Big Sky High School, and I'm grateful that I have a student that just graduated from high school, so I don't have to think about that in terms of being a mother as well as being a teacher. And I feel concerned about going back into Phase One because we are going in a condensed learning model, which means that we will do an entire semester in 22 days, and 22 days will be divided in half because 11 of those days we will see the kids, and the other 11 days we will be... the other 11 days, they will be learning remotely, which we will not be teaching them. They will just be receiving assignments to do at their, you know, ability to do that in those online days. I also feel like it is definitely not a best practice to teach in a two-and-a-half-hour block. I think that more than anything, though, it's not a best practice to try to learn an entire semester in 11 face-to-face days and just have some practice time in the other two days. I can't imagine ingesting an entire semester's worth of math in 11 days. And truly, I am an English teacher, so that means something, I suppose. I'm also very concerned about the number of teachers that have requested the telecommuting accommodations. And as somebody, one of my colleagues said earlier, we are required to show that we have an ADA necessity, and I can understand that. I personally feel that that is limiting. I'm sure that there will not be enough spaces for teachers that even have ADA necessities and accommodations in order to grant them that time away from the schoolroom. I'm also very concerned about lunchtime students that, I was surprised to hear that the students that need to get lunch at that school on their day off will still be able to come to the school and receive lunch. And so in that instance, to me, they are, that that doesn't do anything to insulate our groups into two halves of the alphabet. Because if they're going to come and get lunch anyway, then they're going to all be mixing with the kids that are there. So I see that to be very problematic. And I also agree that having students that leave campus are also just going to increase the number of exposures that we will be dealing with per person exponentially. I also very, very adamantly disagree about even considering Phase Two. But if we were to consider Phase Two in the second week of September, none of us will be in small groups. The smallest group that we would have in our classroom would maybe be 20 people unless we were having a specialized group that was like set up of 15 or under. But most high school classrooms have 25 to 30 people, not including the teacher. And there's, the room is a 30 by 30 room. There's no way to have social distancing. I just, I just feel like my brain is spinning 100 different directions, and I truly, truly can appreciate that this is an extremely difficult decision. But I thank you to consider, you know, going in all remote as opposed to a hybrid model because then we would be able to see all kids for the two-and-a-half hours. We could even work synchronously. And I understand totally, Ashley was right on, there are going to be some issues, there are going to be family problems, there's going to be connectivity issues. But I believe that then we could see our kids five days a week instead of two days a week. And I just truly appreciate that you are in a hard spot, and I thank you very much and wish you all good health and safekeeping.
Okay, thank you. We have about 15 additional raised hands and one additional written. One additional written comment.
But I couldn't help it. I mean, there are so many things to say.
Yeah, I was hoping.
Okay. The next person in line is Mary Lyons. If you'd unmute and make your comment. Mary Lyons, if you would unmute and make your comment.
Hey, Hatton, I think you're probably talking, but we can't hear you anymore on the Zoom. You muted everyone very successfully.
Oh, thank you, Casey. Actually, Rob, I need you to unmute up there. Thank you very much. Okay, the next person in line is Mary Lyons. If you would unmute and make your comment.
Thanks. My name is Mary Lyons, and I'm a Title I instructional coach. And first, I want to thank everybody for all the work they've put into this. I've been part of some of it, and it's an immense amount of work, and there's a whole lot to consider for all of our kids, and everybody has our kids and our teachers, I believe, truly in their hearts. But I want to share with you that I've been teaching fourth and fifth grade ramp-up at Franklin this year. It's been in a small, this summer, it's been a small group, and I've been, as Kristi Mira was, so excited to be with the kids and can tell the kids are so glad to be happy and to be together. And some of the good points are the kids have been great about wearing their masks. They are pretty good at keeping distance, but there's a small number of kids in a fairly small room. One of the problems I've seen is it's a little bit hard to understand the kids sometimes with their mask on. They're a little, it sounds a little bit mumbly, and if you have to ask them to repeat, some of them get a little bit embarrassed. So I'm just kind of throwing out some considerations in some of my experience here. The kids have been great about standing on their spots for six-foot distancing, and the fourth and fifth graders are pretty responsible to that. They've even been amazing when we've been out on the playground and we've said, nope, you can't be on that equipment because we don't have enough people to sanitize it in between. That's a really difficult thing for fourth and fifth graders. But I have to say, the kids have gone all out and done a good job, and being together has meant a whole lot. But I also have to say that teaching with COVID has some difficulties. We've been able in our small group to keep our distance as far as desks facing forward and not, you know, spaced between the kids. But as a teacher, it's really difficult to not reach over and help somebody find their place to, when they come up with their paper or their book and they want to show you something with all the love and excitement in their little hearts, you want to grab it and touch them and let them show it to you. And it takes a lot of effort to be socially distanced and yet still be a good, loving, caring, positive teacher. Helping kids get signed into a computer takes our closeness. And yes, we can put on gloves, but not, just kind of trying to let you know what it's like right now, being with the kids. Sanitizing surfaces, having them wash their hands for 20 seconds. It's not so bad if you have five or six kids, but when we have to do that with 15 kids, it makes a lot different. And that's where everything bumps up. If we're talking about half of our classes, half of the time, fifth graders, fourth graders can have 30 kids in a class, and the game changes. You can't have everybody together. They have to sit facing the front. We've spent years, you know, making our teaching strategies include kids and having kids collaborate and kids taking time to learn so that we're not just telling them. I fear that that's going to be hard to keep up, you know, sustaining the kind of teaching that we have done lately isn't going to happen. So I don't honestly know the answer. I wish I did, and I've worked really hard this summer at keeping up with things, and I've taught for a long time, and I want to be there with kids. But most importantly, I want my kids to be safe. I want to be safe as a teacher. My working condition is their learning condition, so it's one in the same. What happens to kids at school goes home to families. What happens to families comes back to school. So I guess I just hope that we move slowly and that we really think about safety and make sure that what we do is sustainable. My heart of hearts wants to be there with my kids because that's what all of us as teachers want. But I really want to encourage that we have smaller class sizes. As I said, it was sustainable in ramp-up because we have smaller kids. But when we get up to 15, I really see the game changing. And I wish I had an answer, but we're just going to have to keep stepping out of the box and keep figuring out ways to make the groups be a little bit smaller. Thanks for listening.
Okay, thank you. The next individual in line is Anna Beard. Please unmute, state your name, and make your comment. Anna Beard, if you could unmute.
First of all, whoops, I'm like backwards on my Zoom. So first of all, I wanted to thank the teachers who have spoken up tonight and the single moms. I think that they are a voice that we should have been listening to a long time ago. I think that they are the ones that are being the most creative, who are really in the thick of this and able to problem-solve and discuss these things in depth. That someone who isn't teaching or isn't actively working with kids or maybe has grown kids and doesn't have to deal with sending them to school still, it's just important that we're listening to those voices. I have yet to hear what will happen if you say that you hope that children will have access to adults who are capable and present to provide some coaching, but what if they don't? I have not heard anyone ask that yet. I'm pretty disappointed that that hasn't been asked. I worry about families who have parents with mental illnesses or who are going to have to rely on daycare because it's a safer option or sharing childcare. And what happens if their children fall behind and they are punished for not being able to keep up? It's great that we can hope that everyone has access to that, but the reality is they don't. I think it's important to reiterate the fact that the board chose tonight to not allow public attendance. We are adults who have been practicing this for five months now, who have understood the intricacies of why we're wearing masks and why that's responsible and safe and kind. We are capable of keeping our hands to ourselves, of not licking our things. And that choice was made that it wasn't safe, but we're okay sending, you know, small groups of small children into a room together and hoping that they can be responsible enough to not spread this. I also want to reiterate or back up what so many people have said tonight is that that survey was incomplete. It did not, I think that what Ashley said was perfectly summed it up. It was not informed consent. If you are not a parent who has been going to these meetings, if you are not reading the lengthy and understanding the lengthy emails and following those links, you don't know what you are signing up for. We still don't fully understand what the academy is going to look like, and we just recently found out it's going to be two hours of synchronous learning. And that sends me into a spiral of like, I didn't expect that. And now my decision, did I make the right choice? The last thing that I wanted to say was, when I read that email, I felt collective grief among my community that we are still think it's okay to let children be the like guinea pigs here, you know? And I know that there's no easy answers. I know that the kids who rely on school for safety and for health and for food and all of that, like those kids need to, they need to have access to safe spaces. But I'm really disappointed with how this has all unfolded, and I really, I urge them to not make a decision tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Just to let the trustees know, we have 13 more raised hands and five additional written comments. The next individual is Molly Kay. Please state your full name and make your comment.
Hi, my name is Molly Cast, K-A-S-T, and I am a teacher for MCPS and also have an incoming third grader. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you so much, Dr. Watson, and all the trustees for all your hard work. I know that there are not any easy answers and that dealing with this is very challenging. I wanted to state one of my main concerns besides the basic health and safety for all students and staff members, as we likely head back into the hybrid model, is the lack of childcare in our community. And assuming that students will be home three days a week and home on their school days by 2:00 PM, this is completely unrealistic for any working parent. No working parent is off by 2 o'clock to have their student, and no working parent only works two days a week. And this creates a huge inequity for those, as many have said before, for those families who have support at home and those who do not have any support at home and may not even be safe or attended to while at home. This also creates the need to rely on third-party care and creates way more close contacts for those having to reach out to grandparents to watch students or daycare centers or some other family friend and creates those other close contacts on the days that students are not in school. Childcare in Missoula is already nearly impossible to find, so I'm not sure where we'll find space for more than 1,000 kids if we need to find space to put them on those off days. And how will parents afford this extra cost? I think that it's really important to recognize that we are going to have to be home with students when they're quarantining, and how do parents take off time from work to be home with students every time they're required to quarantine? I know we've been just encouraged to kind of let it play out and see what happens, but we are starting school in two weeks, and I currently have no plan for my seven-year-old. And I think it would ease anxiety and frustration with a lot of community members, a lot of parents and staff members, if we had some suggestion or plan in place for what we're going to do when school starts. As others have said, I urge you to consider this closely and perhaps not make a decision tonight, but to kind of think outside the box and see what we can do so we have a solid plan and we're not throwing this together at the last minute. Thank you for considering my comment.
Thank you very much. The next in line is Kelly McDonald. Please unmute and make your comment.
Hi, my name is Kelly McDonald, M-C-D-O-N-A-L-D. I first want to acknowledge that we are in the traditional homelands of the Salish people, and I would like to show my respect and humility to all native peoples and who are indigenous to this place that we now call Montana. I have two children in this school district, one entering the sixth grade and one entering the fourth grade. I want to thank all of you who are listening and who are there for all of your time and your hard work and your creativity. My comment is about the hybrid model and remote learning. I really appreciate that there is the option to do remote learning 100%. And I feel that for students who want to do remote learning, I really appreciate that option. But I also want to say that for any teachers requesting to teach remotely, I believe that their request should be approved immediately. And rather than having them wait in uncertainty or waiting in limbo, because I believe that's totally unacceptable for a teacher to have to wait to know. Because teachers need time to prepare their lessons and what they're going to be teaching. And I believe that their health and safety is the utmost importance right now. I believe that teaching music online in a pandemic will be safer and therefore will be better than teaching music in person in a pandemic. Children singing together and playing their instruments, enclosed rooms, I don't feel it safe, and I don't feel that safe for the teachers. I believe that opening schools in a hybrid model will make the number of faces in our community worse, not better. So I believe that we should open in a phase zero. Either open in a phase zero or put off this decision. I don't, I don't feel that it's appropriate to make this decision tonight. My question I have is if or when a teacher has a sore throat or a fever, do we need a substitute teacher for that time? And I'm concerned that using substitute teachers and having teachers be absent will get complicated, things will get complicated really for us. I don't want anyone to have to risk their health or safety in a pandemic. I don't want anyone to have to risk their health or safety in a pandemic. I feel that we had less cases in this community back in March when everything was shut down here. So less cases than we have now, so based on that, shouldn't we be staying shut down? I feel that this will be a disaster for students who are still children, many of whom can barely handle the old, their old daily school expectations and a disaster for their parents and their teachers. Um a friend of mine with no underlying health problems was, had to be hospitalized for coronavirus. She's not elderly. She's, doesn't have any health problems, but she had to go to the hospital for a week. I feel that there is too much about this virus that is still unknown and the risk for having school in person in a pandemic is too high. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next individual in line is Ezra Shearer. Please unmute and make your comment.
Good evening. My name is Ezra Shearer, E Z R A S H E A R E R. Um I have a few brief comments to make. The first is, I think that this process is flawed. Many people made their decisions about remote teaching and remote learning when we had the assurances from the board that this, and the superintendent, this was going to be a data-driven decision, meaning that if cases went up, we'd move it forward remote. And obviously, that's no longer the case. And so that shift needs to be acknowledged in all the data you're citing. Um the second piece is fear. So I want you to think about a classroom where you're afraid to be in it. Because you're afraid that if someone coughs next to you, you're gonna kill your mother when you get home because you contracted coronavirus. We're talking about life and death. And so I want you to tell me how I'm supposed to teach if I'm afraid and how my students are supposed to learn if they're afraid. And my students are going to opt into in-person learning because they're afraid if they opt into the ambiguous online academy that doesn't even yet exist, they won't have the same educational opportunities because they won't have the same educational opportunities. So they are so afraid of not learning, they'll show up. And then once they're there, they're in constant fear. And then they go into the hallway because the juniors who don't want to have open campus at lunch are thrown into open campus and a kid next to them pulls down his back and coughs in his face and says, you know what? This is all a hoax. What is it like to learn if you are in a constant paid state of fear? And that's what we're asking our kids to do. Hey, I need you to show up because that's the way it works around here. The last piece, and I think I've got a few seconds left, is about liability. If the district is acknowledging the responsibility of spreading coronavirus, are they also taking on the liability that comes from that? We don't know if a six-year-old who contracts is, contracts coronavirus is gonna have long-term permanent health damage, even if it's not acute symptoms that hospitalize them. You're voting into the unknown. We don't know what those risks are. We don't know if that 12-year-old who who contracts it but has a healthy recovery, we don't know what happens six months from now. We don't know if they'll ever be able to run track again. And we're gonna, we're gonna take that risk. And so the last thing with the last 35 seconds, I want you to think about a teacher. And I want you to think about a teacher that you're thankful for from one point in your past. Not the one you hate, you know, fourth-grade teacher, you know, the one, that one was me. Don't think about that one. Think about the one you love. And then I want you to think, you know something? You and your family's lives are worth the risk. That teacher that put you where you are today, them and their family, put them in the classroom. You make this decision when cases are going this way. We'd be having a different conversation if cases were going another direction, but they're not. That was a conversation we were promised. Thank you. Have a good night. Good luck.
Thank you very much. The next in line is Jennifer Hall. Please unmute and make your comment.
My name is Jennifer Hall, H A L L. I am here tonight as a pediatrician who practices here in Missoula and also as the mother of two students who go to MCPS schools. Um but most of them here as a pediatrician because, to be honest, my kids are privileged and we can take care of them. So I'm here to represent hopefully the other kids in our community and to provide a collective voice here. Um I want to thank everyone for this conversation. I think it's a really important community conversation. I want to thank Dr. Watson for his really thoughtful and thorough and evidence-based plan that he has proposed. At the, at the bottom line, this is a risk-benefit analysis for all of us, for every family, for the school board, for the teachers. Um and I think that's how we have to look at this. Um I also really think that we have to look at school as an essential service that we provide to our community, to our families, to our kids. Um and it is just as essential as the healthcare we provide and the groceries that we provide. I understand acutely how scary it feels to go to work, to contemplate going to work in our new reality. I get it. I also understand that what we understand about COVID five months ago is not what we understand now. And I think um that we have the data that helps us understand how to keep staff and how to keep students safe in a school setting. Um our schools provide essential, essential services for our kids and our families. And I think that we know how to do it now in a way that is much safer than what we knew back in March when we had to close schools. Um we are under a situation where this is not gonna go away in the next month or next six months or next year or next two years. COVID is our new reality. And it is really hard to adjust to new realities, but this is it. Um and we are in a position where we have to um adjust to the reality that we're given. We need to send our kids to school. We need to do it in a way that's safe for staff and safe for students. And we do have the data. We do have the testing ability. We do have um the health department's support to do this. Um and I think that Ellen Leahy's comments speak volumes to the health aspect of this. This needs to be a data-driven decision. This is not emotional. As emotional as we all feel about it, this is not an emotional or political decision. Um so I want to thank everybody for their time. Um and I appreciate the thoughtfulness that everybody has given to this tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. The next in line is Shannon Judge. Go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Hello, um I am Shannon Judge, S H A N N O N J U D G E, and I am a second-grade teacher at Russell. Um I will try to not make this emotional, but it is. Um my job is to take care of people's children. And on a normal case, that's stressful. Um I can control my classroom. But when a student goes to the bathroom, a five, six, seven, or eight-year-old goes to the bathroom, I can't control whether they wear their mask. I can't count on both hands the number of times during a normal year kids come back from the bathroom. Did you wash your hands? Oops, I forgot. I understand we can use hand sanitizer. And some classrooms are lucky enough to have sinks in their classroom. But that's an equity issue in our buildings where, in my case, we have three classrooms. Best-case scenario, 30 kids sharing two sinks. If we're washing our hands before school, after breakfast, before lunch, after lunch, it seems like the CDC's biggest consideration is hand washing. And it doesn't seem fair that some schools and classrooms will get the hand washing and other schools will have hand sanitizer all of the time. Um in addition to that, I think about the contact tracing. And we have talked a lot about contact tracing. And if a five-year-old goes to the bathroom and takes their mask off and inevitably plays with another student, I can't safely ensure that we can make a positive contact tracing with everyone that is involved. And in addition to the students that I will have in front of me, I have family at home. And there are other adults that will be in my classroom that I worry about my support staff and my custodians. And the fact that, I know it shouldn't be an emotional thing, but when you're dealing with humans in front of you, it's emotional. And I would like you to consider giving teachers more time to think these through because not all teachers have been a part of these things and the planning that has gone into this. And I appreciate the trustees. I appreciate Dr. Watson. I appreciate everyone ti- everyone's time. But some of these are building-level things that we need time to brainstorm within our own community. And I want to be back with my students. That's the whole reason I became a teacher. But please consider, when you're saying we have to keep teachers and staff and students safe, to Ezra's point, if you are constantly in a state of stress and fear, what does that do to our immune systems? Masks can only do so much, but if we're constantly in a state of fear, how do we protect ourselves and protect the humans that we are in charge of protecting? Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. The next in line is Pam3. If you would unmute, state your full name and make your comment, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
It's very faint. Can you speak up?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh Pam Greenwood, G R E N W O O D. Um I just uh want to make a comment that I feel they need to focus more on one thing, not a hybrid. Um last year when we had to go um to online learning, it was very difficult for the kids to even grasp that concept. Um I don't even think the teachers had an idea of how to communicate with all the students. Um as my kids um emailed their teachers, they never got responses back. So in turn, I was not only the parent who was working full-time and going to school for a ti- full-time, I was also the teacher as well. Um I think there needs to be more time in thinking out a better solution. Um the kids will be confused on what class am I doing today? Am I going to school? Am I not going to school? Is my teacher gonna be online? Are they gonna be able to help me? Um it just seems very, even looking at my kids' schedules, seems very confusing on what they're gonna be doing from day to day. Um I also find it um kind of humorous. The um health department has shut down baseball games that are outside and people are sitting with their families, but they're gonna allow schools to open up with hundreds and hundreds of kids in them. Um I don't see how that is, again, even feasible um for kids. I mean, like living here of, you know, are they gonna get something? Are they gonna take it home? Are they gonna be able to learn what they're gonna learn? And as my um teacher mentioned, like, Mom, why don't they just focus on the core classes? The stuff that, you know, math, English, science, social studies, um music they can do. But last year when they had to record themselves reading, what was just insane. It, it, it taught my son nothing. Um do more stuff to teach them things like where music came from and teaching those core classes and doing anything at a time instead of combining going to school, doing online. Take some more time to figure out how to do the online remote learning at home so that the teachers have time to figure out what they're gonna do. Make it laid out as a regular school day. The kids log, log in from 8:00 to 9:30 in math, have a break, and then come back and log into social studies. It, it, it just, there's more ideas that you can come up with than half here, half there, not sure who's gonna be teaching what, what teachers wanna teach online. Um I just really need to take more time to figure this out because our kids are not gonna be successful at all in learning this year. Um I don't think that last year's online was successful because teachers didn't have time to plan. And I think kids are gonna be behind this year because of that. So they're gonna have to catch up from last year's online learning. So take the time to figure out how online is going to work so our kids can actually learn online. Because in reality, we might as well face it, online is gonna be the new schooling, regardless of what we all really want as our kids to be in school, because I do. I want my kids to be in school. They want to be with their friends. But in reality, that's not gonna happen. So thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. The next public comment is from a phone with the lost numbers 1501. You need to press star six to unmute yourself and then you can make your comment.
Hi, my name's Brandy Charisvia, and I um want to thank everyone for all the time and effort they've put in. I want to thank everyone for all the comments I've heard. And I'm speaking as a parent in support of all the comments and well-researched uh data that's been presented by teachers as well as some other parents. I want to voice my opposition to reopening at this time. I um, you know, clearly, with respect to the parent survey, that seems to be, that's one thing I wanted to comment on, seems to be using or support of reopening. And when I filled out that survey, and I imagine lots of parents filled out that survey, we were under the impression that in-school options would not be an option unless cases were declining and it was safe to reopen. That doesn't appear to be the basis upon which the board is considering reopening at this time. So I feel that in responding to that survey, it's, it was a bit deceptive because I was under the impression that, well, in learning, in-person learning wouldn't be an option unless cases were declining. So what would your preference be at that time? So I don't think it's um reliable data that one can really use at this point, given what we're seeing now, both in the state of Montana and around the country. Um especially when considering what's happened with other schools in other states that have reopened. So let me just, the other comment I did want to make is that with respect to the online academy, there is almost no information for a parent to try to make an educated decision on that. I don't know who the teachers would be. Um I don't know if they would be the same even high school level. I have a daughter in high school. I don't know that they wouldn't be middle school teachers. I don't know how um the IB or AP program would be accounted for with the, an online academy that's not associated with the same school or what the classes that she would even be enrolled in. So I don't see how that, I have the ability to make an educated decision with respect to that. Uh and I would just urge the board again, as everyone before me has already commented, to stay at remote learning at this time. That's what the data in our county, in our state, and in our country frankly, dictate should occur based on what we were told by Dr. Watson earlier this summer. And so I would just urge that the board reconsider and stick with what's the safest, especially considering the most recent comments about how our kids are supposed to learn when they're in fear and it's just not an optimal learning environment, even if you send them back. Thank you.
Brandy, before you hang up, could you please spell your full name for us?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Brandy, B R A N D Y, last name Charisvia, C A R V S T I A.
Thank you so much. The next in line is Casey Blue.
Hello again. Casey Blue, Missoula Education Association President, with the same weird spelling of my name as always. Um I think that you've heard very clearly that every educator here wants to work with kids and we want to do our best work to meet their needs. We know that before we can deliver academics, though, we have to meet basic needs, both ours and our students. We must have safety needs met. It's one of Maslow's base hierarchy of needs. Um physical safety through quality air ventilation, circulation, and filtration, through proper mask-wearing. And I know you guys are probably struggling with some of that at this point. But you know, we're only three and a half hours in and we're gonna have kids for five and a half hours a day. Um we have to maintain six feet of distancing whenever possible, especially if masks have a tendency to slip or come off. We know we can only do that with small groups of kids. And, you know, small groups and few contacts is the other part of that. You know, that sense of safety is also a sense- is the other part of that. You know, that sense of safety is also a sense of security. And that's where you hear for the ask of time. Time has come up a lot, not just from our educators, but also from our community members. You know, we, we want that feeling that we have a slow, predictable, sustainable start back to school. You know, we need predictability for planning for parents and teachers, you know, that every other week, waiting to see what might happen next, or if we would stay the same, was absolutely draining last year for all of us, I would say, especially our students. We need protocols and time to teach those protocols to those small groups of students so that we can ensure that they actually have them down. And of course, we definitely want to have time to work ourselves into a rhythm and feel at ease. And I think, you know, there are two big things that changed and got us to 118 online Zoom participants at this point, three and a half hours into this meeting. And that's that, you know, our survey data came out, both the MEA survey and the parent survey. And we had a slight change in how we were deciding and under what premise we would go back to in-person learning. And we also have seen, you know, a change in the fact that this is now a board decision. And we were told in the last couple of board meetings that this would not be an action item on the agenda. So we definitely would have spread this out for you. And, you know, I appreciate you sitting through these and actively listening. Don't worry, I definitely have been hitting your video screen. So, you know, I can see Dave making eyes at me and all that good stuff. We know that this is tough. We know that there are no good answers. We've definitely, you know, been working on this for a huge chunk of all the way from spring break to this moment in time. And we're going to continue on.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to take a, we have five individuals in line for a public comment. And I'll take a break and read some of the submitted comments from Corinne Bassin, C O R I N N E B A S S I N. There needs to be the ability for families that cannot go into the classroom but who struggle with the online option to have the ability to do some type of supported async, I think that means asynchronous, homeschool and keep their space in local school and not have to pull their child from the school. The next comment from Laurie Young, Y U N G. On the survey, I responded that my kids would be in person if that was available on the assumption that in-person would only be happening if COVID cases were declining. I didn't intend that response to be viewed as my preference or a vote for in-person learning. While I would love for my kids to be learning in person, I want the data to drive this decision. Also, it seems incredibly risky to allow high school students to mix during lunch. I would prefer that my two high school kids eat lunch in their classrooms. Finally, I hope we can consider how to fully support the families that need their kids to be in person, as many have suggested tonight. The next comment from Stephanie Land, L A N D. I want to comment on the statement by Dr. Watson in that universal testing is not adequate because it gives a window for that particular day. While this may be true, it allows the kids who may have COVID but are asymptomatic to show as positive. Not everyone has symptoms. Universal testing is key to know how many positive cases you actually have, instead of trying to figure out who is positive based on symptoms alone. The next comment is from Brian Goldstone, G O U L S T O N E. And my two children will, he says, "My name is Brian Goldstone and my two children will be attending Washington Middle School this fall, sixth and eighth grade. Please freely share any and all of my comments. I believe parents are seeking in-person instruction this fall because spring remote learning was a slapdash, unmitigated disaster. And while online learning was unexpectedly thrust upon us, things most certainly did not get better as the weeks went on. Although my children attended two different schools, Rattlesnake and Washington, their experiences were nearly identical. They had no streaming classes. They had no real-time teacher instruction. Teachers relied heavily on third-party YouTube videos instead of making their own recordings." The next comment is from Mike Marcinkowski, M A R C I N K O W S K I. This is Mike Marcinkowski and I want my statement read in public comment. I would like to remind the school board that schools that went back online have not made any local or national negative news. The only negative press has been from schools that went back face, it says fax to face, but I believe he intended that to mean face to face. The last written comment for now is from Erin Beaudette, B E A U D E T T E. Great comment about substitutes. As an MCPS substitute, it needs to be considered that a single substitute could be in five different buildings, five different classrooms in one week. How will you then contact trace all of those classes if that substitute tests positive? The next individual with their hand raised is Elizabeth Williams. Go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Williams, E L I Z A V E T H, W I L L I A M S. Thank you, everyone who has stuck it out this far. So I would like to start my comment. I was shocked and, this is echoing some other things that have been said. I was really shocked and disappointed to see in the recent email that Dr. Watson planned to open in the hybrid model when we had been told at previous board meetings very explicitly that the hybrid model was going to be, was going to be the option if cases were declining. And then tonight during Dr. Watson's presentation, he very explicitly acknowledged that there has recently been a surge in cases and said in these words that it did not change his mind about opening in the hybrid model. And frankly, that does, and then he kept saying, or I'll speak directly to you, Dr. Watson, you kept saying, we're just going to have to watch this for all these different metrics. We're just going to have to watch these. But the fact that you made this statement last time and then said it didn't change your mind about, if the cases went up, didn't change your mind about opening in the hybrid model. It really doesn't give me a lot of faith in what continuing to watch this means. I don't understand what that means. So that's concerning as a parent. I'm speaking as a parent of a rising first grader at Paxson. I also am a former school teacher, not in MCPS, but in other districts. And I am a current PhD student in public health at UM. I also would like to touch on this, this falling behind and this learning loss. Dr. Watson in previous meetings has talked about these models that projected some amount of learning loss. And someone tonight commented that we're acting like it would be detrimental for students to fall behind this year. And I, I have to agree with that. When we talk about learning loss, that's by what standard? The standard that we're setting, and I say this as a former mathematics teacher, the standard by which we are establishing this learning loss is a standard that we developed that is, one, arbitrary, and two, during a time when there was not a pandemic. So maybe we need to be more creative in so many ways, not just creative about where students are going to be, but creative about what learning looks like, creative about what types of things we are valuing in instilling in our kids this year. So it just feels like we are trying so hard to make school happen and it's just not going to happen because that, the world isn't what it was. I, I really appreciate Dr. Hall's comments about viewing school as an essential service. I understand that there are families and kids in our district that need that, that need, that rely on it for childcare, for food, for different things. But again, let's just be more creative about this. We don't have to make school happen. And that is, and then I also want to touch on for the online academy, this question of, okay, for K through five kids, they're going to have two hours of synchronous learning and they should have an adult there. And I want to echo what was said before, what if an adult can't be there? And what will happen for that child's educational trajectory in terms of, in terms of what happens to them within the MCPS? And will they be penalized for that? And then I also want to echo that the survey was deceptive because we were told, oh, just fill it out to the best of your ability. Like, I know you can't make a decision right now, but now it's being used as a way to show, look how many parents want to return to in-person school. So that concludes my comment. No, no, testing, testing. I, I really strongly believe that we need, we need something, we need some kind of plan. The only piece of testing that Rod Watson touched on tonight was that he won't be doing universal testing. But what, but what will happen? We're just trying to like send, we're trying to say, okay, if you're symptomatic, then go get tested. But the results are not coming back fast enough. There are going to be more people needing to get tested as MCPS starts back up, as UM starts back up. And something, we need some kind of plan. Is there a lab that MCPS can contract with to prioritize MCPS testing?
Okay, Ms. Williams, you're well past the three-minute mark.
That's the end of my comment.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next individual in line is Jordan Kraus. Please unmute and make your comment. Jordan Kraus, if you could unmute and make your comment.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Oh, you, okay. Thank you. I just was saying, thank you all for being here, whether you're listening in the board meeting or you're listening from afar. I just appreciate the board and Dr. Watson taking all of our questions and comments and everybody for coming on and voicing any questions or concerns or comments you have. I think it's really important that we listen to all the diverse opinions that are in our, in our communities. This is great. Thank you. I'm a kindergarten teacher in the district and I, just like every other teacher I've heard from today, I love being with my kids. I think the hardest part of being in virtual teaching was not being near my littles and not being able to celebrate with them and to support them in person. So I really recognize that that's a huge piece of education. I also have some questions, though, about safety. So I recognize as a teacher what I need to do if, if I have any symptoms of COVID, I need to call in sick. But I have seen both of my years at little school, I've had kiddos who were fine the first couple hours of school and then about three or four hours in, they just completely fell apart, you know, fever and, and it was, you know, the flu or it was a cold. But what had happened was their parent had given them Tylenol or Ibuprofen before they went to school so that they could make it through school, so they could go to work. And I guess I'm just wondering how, what sort of precautions are going to be taken? What sort of, I'm sorry. What sort of expectations will, will there be for families fully recognizing that this isn't just a protection that's going to protect their, their teachers and the staff at the schools, but also the other families who have kids in those classrooms? So what's going to happen if a child comes to school and we teachers are supposed to be monitoring that student's health throughout the day? They come in looking fine, but then it turns out they had taken medication to mask symptoms. I'm also kind of curious about what sort of expectations will there be in place for families who have had close contacts or who have a diagnosis within their immediate family or within their household? Do those families need to keep their kids home? Do those families need to notify the district and their schools? I know that with, with us, with teachers and with, you know, support staff, we're required to make those notifications. But what expectations are there for families to create and build upon that safety at school? So again, I know that there are no easy answers. I know that we're in an incredibly difficult time. I really appreciate all the work you're doing. And I just wanted to voice those two concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We have three more raised hands. The next in line is Nathan Stevens. Please unmute and make your comment.
Yes, my name is Nathan Stevens, S T E P H E N S. I have two children at Missoula County Public Schools, one at Chief Charlotte and one at Meteville. I was curious about Dr. Hall's comments. I didn't hear what kind of doctor she was. Was she an epidemiologist? And I was curious if she was going to be sending her kids back to public school? Oh, pediatrician? Also, I wanted to offer some advice to board to please step to three minutes. It's very late. Also, there's been a lot of talk about equity tonight. Your plan is not equitable. There, there is no equity here for students, which is unfortunate. And you're in a really tough mind here. But it's not safe for kids to go back. And I think everyone realizes that. The epidemiologists are saying that it's not safe. And you're seeing across the country that it's not safe. So I'd like to imagine a summer where the board thought about ways where teachers could workshop ways to be online with their students this fall in the best way possible. But I guess we missed that possibility. Also, in the future, you might want to talk to BEVER, the Bureau of Economic, Bureau of Economic Research at the University of Montana. They do great surveys and actually know what they're doing. And your testing is inadequate and does not protect the children at the schools, nor does it protect my children. I will not be sending them back. And also, I think you should be providing an option to parents to sabbatical their students or to pull them out for a year. I think that that would be a good option for many parents at this time considering. Thank you for taking my comments and for all you're doing. I'm glad to not be in your position. Take care of your business.
Okay, thank you very much. The next raised hand is from Matt Rich. Please unmute and make your comment.
Good evening. I'm talking to you tonight as a symptomatic person. I have a fever and my wife has lost her sense of smell. So COVID is present here in Missoula and we should be very cautious of it. Well, I'd love to speak with you briefly about data. I'm hoping that you can see my video. I believe that the data that Rob showed you tonight is not complete. The last bit of data that he showed was from around July 24th. This is from the county website. This is our most recent data. The R number that Rob showed us was from July 19th around here. And this is where we are now. We are currently in the worst position that our state has been in since the start of this pandemic. This is from your plan on where we should be with reopening. We are not there. We are here. If we are actually following a data-driven plan, if we are actually following the signage, which is what this recommends, then we should not be reopening in phase one. We should be reopening in phase zero. Please, for the safety of our teachers, our kids, and our families and the community as a whole, so that we do not accelerate further, reopen in phase zero. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The last raised hand is Dylan Johns. Please unmute and make your comment.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dylan Johns. I teach at Lowell Elementary School. I'm the music teacher over there. I just want to start, obviously, like everyone else did, by saying thank you so much for sitting here for so long, looking to all our concerns. I really appreciate it. I'm going to try to be quick here. I have been told by multiple people not to speak up during this because I'm not tenured, to be careful about what I say. I'm a very introverted person myself and I didn't want to speak up. But after listening to all of this, I felt like I needed to bring one point that I didn't hear addressed. I looked on Aesop and last, last year I was absent for six days. I had six absences. And only, or actually, five of those six were not covered by any substitutes. They had to be covered in building. And what I'm worried about is that if a teacher contracts COVID and needs to quarantine for 14 days, if we can't get a if we can't get a sub normally, what's going to make the subs come around now? I mean, our, our subs are paid around $11 an hour. And I'm just worried that why would they cover teachers in an even more dangerous environment, especially when a bunch of our subs are just retired teachers who are at more risk than the average person? Again, I thank you very much and I, I tried to keep it very short. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We have one additional raised hand that came in from Galaxy S9 Plus. Please unmute and make your comment and please state your full name.
Hi, I'm not sure if this was called for me. This is Thaai Williams, T-H-A-I. First, I want to speak as a parent of an eighth grader at Quarter Middle School. My son has asthma and he personally has chosen to do the online academy. Last year, as an only child, Flagship was a phenomenal social outlet for him. It was a way for him to connect with other students. And I would like to encourage MCPS to continue with the virtual flagship program next school year for students who are in the online academy. In addition to that, I am a special ed teacher at Hawthorne Elementary. I am one of the high-risk positions. I teach children in grades K-2 who have autism, behavioral disorders, cognitive disabilities, learning disabilities, speech and language.
I'll text you tomorrow.
And students who need full physical support in order to participate in their education program. I was given the opportunity to participate in telecommuting. I heard someone earlier say that we should take the emotion out of it. I, as a teacher, find that very difficult to do. When faced with choosing telecommunicating as a teacher or doing in-person learning, I didn't have enough information. I didn't have enough information to make a decision for the safety of myself or for my family. I reached out to the district asking questions, only some of which got answered related to safety. I also was faced with, do I take that position? Even though I do have a child who has asthma and who is at risk, do I, as a healthy 52-year-old, take that position from another teacher who has a compromised immune system? How do I not face that with some kind of emotion? I was also faced with, do I put my job before my own health? How do I not face that with emotion? And finally, the most difficult decision I had to make of all was, do I put the education of other people's children before the health and safety of my own? Because I love my children, because my parents need me, because my principal relies on me and because I want to be with my children, I chose to do the in-person teaching. At our last board meeting, I walked away feeling really good about the decisions because I felt it was going to be based on a decrease in, in cases. Now, I don't feel that confidence anymore. The question's going through my mind goes, if I'm quarantining, where am I going to do that? I can't do it in my house. If I am quarantining, do I have to use my sick, sick days to do that? I wonder, what was that teacher's survey like? Are you guys willing to share that and go over it publicly? And finally, I hear over and over again that your survey was not reliable. It was not reliable for me. The response you got was not reliable based on the statistics or the, the parameters with which you're judging my responses. So I would encourage the board to wait, wait to make a decision. And I would encourage the school district to redo the parent's survey. I would like to encourage you also to think about the safety of the students and the teachers and to wait to move to the hybrid model and to start in remote learning. I also wrote in the comments that my parent, my partner Keith Irwin is here with me and he would like to make a short comment as well.
I just think the board should consider the safety of the students, the safety of the teachers and the safety of the families. I think it says a lot and is powerful that so many teachers have spoken and have spoken against reopening. Thank you.
Okay, there are no additional hands raised or people indicating in chat that they'd like to make public comment. Would you like to ask one last time?
Oh, there we go. Is there any other person who would like to make public comment? Please raise your hand or unmute your phone. Is it *9?
I need to unplug my microphone.
Okay.
We have two additional hands raised. M E L M, please unmute and make your comment.
I would just like to point out, thank you very much for every comments, but the difficulty that we've had understanding the trustees' comments tonight and the conversation among the trustees just epitomizes the difficulties we will have trying to teach in a blended hybrid model at our schools where we do not have the technology or the cameras or the microphones or any of that to sufficiently teach our students. I'm, the first hour of the meeting chair, we could barely understand you. The person who's off to your left in the back, we never could hear her. There are a few of you sitting well apart from each other and you had difficulty communicating with us and with each other, but you want us to be able to communicate with our students. And it's, you're asking the impossible. And I really, again, urge you, please, to just slow down, back up, take a breath and let us approach this in a cautious and careful manner where we can do the best job for our students who we possibly can do and move forward, one tiny step at a time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the last raised hand for the night is a telephone with the last digits of 0030. If you'd press *6 to unmute and make your comment and please state your full name.
Yeah, hi, this is William Bane, B.A.I.N. I just wanted to say, you know, I feel like we haven't really been given very good choices here. It was, you know, it was basically a yes or no question. And it's not driven by science at this point. And I wanted to add that my kid has done a couple summer programs and the technology is really not that hard. All you have to have is a laptop with a built-in webcam. Each teacher can deliver mostly the same material to every kid via a laptop and stay safe. I understand there are some families for which this is, you know, difficult, but these online courses, they are knocking it out of the park. The technology is not that bad. I think you guys have to go back and do your homework and practice and get it right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll ask one last time, any other public comment? Please indicate in some fashion. Is there anything?
We have one additional hand from Tom McClintock. Please unmute and make your comment.
I just wanted to make one comment following that previous statement. Why not spend some of the resources you're spending on cellular hotspots and laptops for students who might not have equitable, equitable access to an online learning system? That would be a lot simpler for everyone involved and a lot less risky. Thank you.
There is something in the chat that indicates there's a comment from an individual named Daniel McDonald. I haven't been able to find it, so it will take me just a moment unless Mr. McDonald wants to unmute and make that comment now. Just a moment, Mr. McDonald, you're not unmuted.
Hi there, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to try to keep this brief. First of all, I'd like to say I see a lot of, I'm, I grew up here in Missoula. I see a lot of former teachers that I've had over the years to all, and some colleagues that are recently in the field. I would like to say hi and thank you. You guys are the reason I'm here. Second, I would like to just say, I'm actually in the middle of my student teaching. Right now, it was actually paused after the spring over in the, I'm a music educate, education major. I'm really scared because I also happen to work at a local grocery store. And if I'm going to be, you know, in front of all of these kids, I'm going to be, I'm, I'm a vector. I'm going to be like one of the primary people that's going to spread it. And my girlfriend who I live with, she's at risk as well. And I haven't, my mother is even more at risk. I haven't hugged her in, in five months. There is no way I look at going into phase, into Phase 1, even if it's, you know, partially in-person. I'm still going to, you know, spread it if even a single child or any of my, my cooperating teacher students has it. Like, it's, the spread is going to be greater because I work in other public areas. I'm, I'm sorry, I, I will yield the rest of my time. Thank you, guys, for staying up so late. And you guys are a rock, take care.
Thank you very much. We do have another submitted written comment from Sage Brooks, B.R.O.O.K.S. I will be a senior at Hellgate High School this coming year. As a student, I am terrified of going back to school. If I go back in the classroom, I will spend every moment distracted and thinking that someone I care about will die because of COVID-19. I would like to do remote learning, but have no idea what that, what it will look like, what classes will be available. I understand that many families cannot do remote learning, but I believe that all families that can do remote learning should be required to in order to reduce class sizes. The only people who should be allowed to go back to school are those who do not have the resources to participate in online learning. There are two remaining raised hands. Shannon Judge, if you would unmute and make your comment.
Yes, I have one more thing to say regarding masks. In the elementary level, we will be eating breakfast and lunch in our classrooms, which will require students to take off their masks for eating, which is essential. But it brings into question the aerosols being spread around the room when students are eating, inevitably coughing, and then all the other students, again, that they have been in contact with. It seems nearly impossible to do effective contact tracing at an elementary level when students are confined to a small space for eating and drinking and we can't control who they come in contact with before and after school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last comment from Marissa. If you would unmute, state your full name and make your comment, please.
My name is Marissa McClintock. You've spelled my last name several times now because you've heard from my entire family. What I'm hearing from you all, from Danielle, who I'm so glad to see, I'm glad you found her a passion year, man. And she got it burst into tears because she's worried about her littles, is we're scared and we're adults. Our kids are going to be scared and we're not going to be able to get within six feet. Oh, I'm sorry, it's three feet now. How are we going to do this? Are we going to like strap pillows to myself so I can like replicate something like a hug? And unlike the event, our children should be as anxious about this as we are. It's not enough, you guys. We talk a lot about ACEs, that's adverse childhood experience. We need to be looking at PCU's, positive childhood experiences. What kind of positive experiences can we give these kids when they're going to school, terror coming and we can't get within any feet of them? We can't look over their shoulders and say, great job, Danielle. We can't correct their pencil brim. We can't give them a hug, we can't give them a high five. Is that really the school we want to send our kids back to? And also, like, my mother-in-law, my mother-in-law talked on here and I'm not going to be able to see them for the interior, go back to person. And that's not enough for me either. We need to do all we can to make our kids feel safe and secure and I don't feel like we're doing it if this model is followed and I feel like I will lose a great deal of respect and trust for my district, which I've loved working for and I don't want that for us. That's, that's what I've got. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. We did have one additional hand raised from Emily. If you would please unmute, state your full name and make your comment.
Hi, my name is Emily Witthnall. My last name is W.I.T.H.N.A.L.L. I have a senior at Willard and an eighth grader at Washington. And I appreciate all of the very thoughtful comments from teachers and fellow parents. I won't repeat a lot of things that have been repeated over and over again. But as I've been listening, it sounds very much like the board needs to take more time with this decision. I was just reading today that 800 of these students in Georgia are now quarantined after six days in school. They're not Georgia. At this point, it seems that even without clarity about the online academy, there will be far less disruption in learning because eventually people are going to be quarantined by a dozen or possibly the hundreds. The hybrid model, I think, is very concerning as others have pointed out to the additional contacts kids will have. Equity is absolutely a concern for me. So my suggestion is that the schools start to delay long enough to solve for the complex concerns that many people have already stated. I believe that beginning in a fully online mode for the first nine weeks, in the very least, while keeping an eye on COVID numbers would be ideal. I also think it's necessary to provide very clear parameters for what numbers call for online learning versus the other phases. Obviously, online schooling is not a solution for all families, but I think taking extra time to solve for childcare solutions and for very small in-person options for kids who absolutely need to be in-person is vital for ensuring safety and equitable solutions for kids and teachers. Thank you all for all of your work on this. I envy your position in trying to make these very complex decisions.
It appears that there have been no more indications of anyone wanting to make public comment on this agenda item. And I see Hatton is, I see Hatton is shaking her head that that is correct. So we do have a motion on the floor. We have taken board comment, we have taken public comment. And so now it is the time for the trustees to vote on the motion on the floor. I will try to restate it. It was a motion to permit MCPS to restart in-person education in a hybrid model on August 26th and to permit the administration to establish an online option for any student that would like an alternative to in-person learning and with the caution that this recommend, this plan would be reassessed on a weekly basis and any other changes or updates would be brought back to the board. And so that is the motion on the table. So I will ask for all trustees in favor of the motion to please indicate by raising their hands. And that is Trustee McDonald, Trustee Mercer, Trustee Algaris, Trustee Wake, Trustee Old Person, Trustee Lorenzen, Trustee Vogel, Trustee Holland. And that appears all of those in favor. All those opposed, please raise your hand. And that is Trustee Service and Trustee Decker. So the motion passes. And so we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is to get an update on the budget in anticipation of the budget meeting that is set for next Thursday when we would be approving the budget for MCPS. So Pat, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So beginning on page 30, or excuse me, 52, 57, there are a number of spreadsheets that are attached. Many of these we've gone over. Really, they're presented and provided for the, for the board and others to have a little advanced viewing of what the documents will look like next week, including the resolutions and the motion. So the, the information on pages 59 and 60, these, these, 50, 59 reflects the budgeted funds for the elementary with the final budget, numbers, levies, mills. mills and tax impact.